Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee meeting of Wednesday, March 5. We are coming to you this evening from the Savage Center. I have all of my committee members here in attendance. Unable to join us this evening is Superintendent Luff, so Dr. Munoz will be filling in in that role. I'm going to ask everyone that is in attendance to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First order of business on our agenda is approval of minutes. You have several sets of minutes in your packet. We're actually not going to be approving all of them this evening. So we are going to be looking at the February 12 open session meeting minutes and the February 25th open session meeting minutes. I think we're going to hold off on all of the executive session minutes. We have a few things we just want to take care of in those before we ask for a vote. Are there any questions or discussion on the open session minutes from February 12th or 25th?
No, move to February 12th and 25th open session minutes.
Moved by David, is there a second?
I'll second, but just a question for Donna. Donna, did you say there was a type version that you?
Yes, on the February 25th, I wrote February 2025, so I just have to add 25th comma 2025. So I will do that and resend it out to everybody.
Okay. And actually, I'm going to ask, I just realized this myself and I apologize. I was not in attendance on February 12th, so do you mind if we take those separately? So do I have a motion for February 12th? Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Seconded by David, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain. So can we take February 25th?
Move.
Moved by Kate and seconded by David, all those in favor?
Aye.
So that's five to zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Dr. Munoz, do we have correspondence this evening?
Do, we have one.
Okay.
This is from Ethan Murphy. He's a Norwood High School graduate, class of 2024. He writes, "Dear Norwood High School School Committee, I write this letter to implore you not to phase out the Latin program at NHS. I am a 2024 summa cum laude graduate from Norwood High, and I took Latin all four years. Latin was not only my favorite class, but a class that was among the most beneficial classes that I took at school. Latin not only helps students understand words like phrases like summa cum laude and words derived from the Latin such as those in medical texts, scientific texts, and sophisticated literature. Many Latin derivative words appear in the SAT, which is the basic knowledge of the Latin language, can be monumentally helpful in a student's success on these tests. Latin class also teaches more widely applicable skills. Latin covers particular principles and elements of grammar that are lacking or simply not taught in the English curriculum. These grammar principles are used and recall when translating Latin to English, which means they are directly applied to academic and everyday uses of English language. Therefore, the study of Latin supplements and builds upon English grammar principles and leads to higher language proficiency and literary sophistication. On top of that, the Latin class at NHS teaches ancient history and culture in detail that no other class does. Latin teaches students about influences from the past and the impacts they have on society today. The Greco-Roman government structures, the principles of democracy, and the Roman Senate. Many modern governments are structured and built on the same ideals. The elected chief mastergrates of the Roman Republic and the councils are reminiscent of the president and vice president in the US executive branch. The Romans Tribune of the Philibens, representing the common Romans, had the power to veto laws the Senate passed, much in the same way the US government has checks and balances on its separate branches. It is clear to the Greco-Roman culture, influences of our government, of our modern world, and learning of these origins is beneficial and complementary to civics and political history lessons that are taught in social studies classes. Much like the architectural wonders of the ancient Greeks in Rome, many aspects of Greek and Roman culture and influence still stand today. Modern buildings, particularly political buildings, often imitate the ancient Greco-Roman style of architecture. However, this influence does not stop at the petty, at the pretty marble facades and the Titanic stadiums. Ancient Roman influence persisted into structures of modern public infrastructure. Modern robes, aqueducts, and bridges might not exist in the same capacity today if it were not for the earlier Roman counterparts. Had the Romans not invented, engineered, and planted the spread ideas across the scope of their influence, the modern world might not have advanced to the degree that it has today. Latin class is so much more than just the study of the Latin language. It is about art, culture, history, and even engineering to an extent. The Greco-Roman mythology and the sculptures, the columns and the arcs, and the poems and the philosophies, and the works of Virgil and Horace, and the works of Blani and Circo and Marcus Aurelius. Latin opens up a whole new world of subjects to pique one's curiosity and feel the passion for learning. To get rid of the Latin program would be to limit the education of culture, history, and even English grammar. It would deprive students of an opportunity to share the inspiration of passion and imagination that the diverse subject matter the Latin program has offered to me and so many others. So, before you cross the Rubicon and get rid of Latin from NHS, consider the impact and the benefits that students could receive from this wonderful class. Imagine that these impassioned students could do, imagine what these impassioned students could do in the future with the knowledge they take away from the class like this. That is what the Latin program at NHS was for me. It would break my heart to know if it were cut from the school. I humbly ask again that the school committee should keep the Latin program at Norwood High. It means a lot to me. My best regards and thanks."
Thank you. Any other correspondence this evening? Wonderful. All right. The next item on our agenda is the warrant report. So this week, I signed warrants in the amounts of $2,074,726.33, $154,250.05, $58,652.99, $9,576.73, $12,922.19, $134,234.45, $12,740.16, and $132,738.22, for a grand total of $4,214,083.85. Are there any questions on that rapid warrant report this evening? Great. Okay, so moving right along in our agenda, that is to the public comment. So again, I want to remind everyone that is watching this evening that our public comment is accessible in multiple ways. We are in a hybrid meeting format, so a person could sign in with the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting to get put onto our list. You can also access the public comment by coming to our meeting and signing in at the time that you get here. And you can also sign in by noon the day of our meeting to get a link to our hybrid meeting. We do have many people here signed up to this evening for public comments, so I will remind those in attendance that public comment is limited to three minutes per person. In order to make it extremely fair, to get everybody through as fast as we can, because we limit public comment period to 30 minutes as we are in a business meeting and we have lots of other business items to take it to tonight. So I will be using a timer on my phone so that it's just fair and everybody can hear when the three minutes is up. And I'll just call you in order that you are here. And as is our policy, also public comment, school committee does not have a back and forth with those who are doing public comment. It is just for you to speak and we do not interact, just so no one thinks we're being rude. But that's just our policy. Okay, so I'm going to start with, oh, so I will say at 7:23, I declare public comment open. And the first person on our signup list is Emily Cale. Kai, Emily Kai, sorry, I know that actually. I didn't know it was spelled that way.
Can I just stand for a second?
Because of the microphone, sorry.
Hi, I'm Emily Kai. My husband and I are Norwood residents. We have a graduating senior who's in Latin for honors and a rising ninth grader who's planning to take Latin I. We ask the members of the school committee and the district administration to strongly reconsider the elimination of the Latin program at Norwood High and to restore the teacher's position. The academic and social benefits of this small but mighty program represent so much more than its enrollment numbers on a spreadsheet. The story is much larger, and it is not expendable. This program aligns with the strategic plans to move the district forward. The funds for Mrs. Holmes' teaching position should be reinstated because her classes achieve and address the needs and plans laid out in Superintendent Luff's entry plan and report. Latin has high academic standards and prepares students for higher learning and future careers. Latin strengthens the curriculum at the Norwood High School. It makes the profile of our graduates competitive for college, supports students considering many degrees, including those in the medical profession. It meets the needs of diverse learners and promotes an understanding of the world and history. In addition to the rigorous academic experiences this program provides, the classes in Latin Club are also a social outlet for students. All students should have opportunities to find ways to belong and feel safe in school. I applaud the district's new efforts to address safety in school climate. Please reconsider eliminating a program that already is an exemplar and a model for creating a safe and supportive learning environment. These Latin scholars, many of whom are here today, have traditions and experiences that create real community and friendship. An online course is not a substitute. I encourage you to find more ways to bring students into the program rather than target it as a cut. The new focus on the middle school curriculum could address ways to feed students into Latin. The pathways to health care option could provide students Latin instruction as they prepare for their professional studies. Eliminating this position of a highly skilled, passionate, and dedicated Norwood teacher who has given 10-plus years to the high school is not the way to achieve your goals. She knows her students, she is available to support them, and volunteers her time and gives them learning opportunities outside of the classroom. We implore you to restore the 1.0 FTE for school year '26 budget. Please find another way to meet the constraints and the reductions of this budget cycle. We understand the challenges you face, and we greatly appreciate all of the time, the effort, and the collaboration that the school committee, the district administration, and the town give to developing a balanced budget. Eliminating this position should not be an option. Thank you.
Next is, oops, sorry?
I have Laura Jordan.
Oh, you have Laura Jordan on?
Laura Jordan, she sent it before.
Oh, yes, I have that.
I know.
Yes, sorry, yes, Laura Jordan. Yeah. There was a typed version.
Good evening. Thank you all for this opportunity, especially thanks to Ms. Stewart for your very thorough email at a very late hour last night. As a Latin teacher myself, I'm also a Norwood resident. I can speak from experience when I say that this is not just a language that we're talking about eliminating. Latin is a discipline. No other language is as valued by universities for the academic commitment that it shows. It opens doors to countless fields, including the medicines, sciences, law, literature, the arts. The spoken language of Latin itself may be considered dead, but it actually evolved into the five Romance languages: French, Spanish, Italian, Romanian, Portuguese, making our students more worldly than those who study just one of those. Many students who are English learners or former English learners are drawn to Latin because of how it strengthens their English vocabulary. Students with dyslexia find Latin beneficial as the language itself requires breaking down its words and learning the patterns of the English language. Those with auditory issues find themselves thriving in my Latin classes as the focus is on reading and writing and not listening and speaking as it is with the modern spoken languages. As a taxpayer and a mother of three children just waiting to come here, I am disheartened to see that this might be eliminated. The name you see on my sweater right here, this is my alma mater. This is consistently the number one school in Massachusetts every single year. It's in the top 10 to 20 in the entire country. It's no coincidence that this school requires all of its students to study six years of Latin, five years of another language. I want to see some value for what our students are offered here in Norwood as well. I'm requesting the basic educational offerings that we expected when my husband and I moved here. I'm tired of hearing about new consultants or liaisons for whom we always seem to find the money when now we're talking about the complete extermination of an entire program, which may be underrolled at the moment, but I know from experience, having gone through this where I teach, languages trend according to the times. Latin is more than capable of bouncing back as it did in the town where I teach with the right push from those who value it. I sincerely hope that you will all value it here. Thank you.
Next on the list is Eve Hogan.
Eve Hogan. I first want to thank you all. I know that you have been given an impossible, heartbreaking task, and I also know that you're volunteers who care deeply and are doing our best for our kids. I'm speaking today to ask you to reconsider cutting the Latin program from NHS. I'm here on behalf of myself, a Norwood resident, an educator, a former Latin student, and a lawyer who has found my Latin studies extremely beneficial in my education and my career, and as the mom of Trevor and Graham Brown. Graham is an NHS ninth grader currently enrolled in the Latin program, and Trevor graduated from NHS last year after taking four years of Latin with Ms. Holmes and is now continuing his Latin and classical studies at Vassar College, largely because of his experiences in Ms. Holmes' class. I know that Latin is often called a dead language, but it's actually anything but lifeless. It is a language that continues to shape our world in deep and enduring ways. Latin serves as the foundation for many modern languages. 60% of English vocabulary has its roots in Latin. This means that by studying Latin, our students gain an invaluable understanding of the structure and etymology of most of the words they encounter every day. This knowledge not only enhances their vocabulary, helps them on the SATs, and allows them to read, write, research, and communicate with greater depth, but also sharpens their analytical and critical thinking skills, giving them a distinct advantage in their academic pursuits and in life. These are skills that extend far beyond the classroom. In an age where the ability to understand and communicate complex concepts is more important than ever, these qualities are invaluable. To cut the Latin program is to deprive our students of an opportunity that is truly unique. It is to eliminate a program that nurtures a diverse set of skills, prepares students for advanced study, affords opportunities for higher learning, and connects them to a cultural legacy that has influenced every corner of the modern world. I urge you to consider the long-term value that a Latin education provides. To the extent there is under enrollment, our action step should not be to eliminate this program, to expand it, but to expand it to the middle school so that students are offered the chance to take it as soon as they begin choosing a language and to raise awareness about its benefits so that more take advantage of this incredible offering. I would also suggest that the amount that Ms. Holmes' individual salary would contribute to solving the current budget crisis is far, far outweighed by the loss to our students that eliminating this program and Ms. Holmes would cause for our kids. Mariah Holmes is an outstanding, dedicated teacher. She is a mentor, guide, and source of stability for our kids. She sends postcards to each one of her Latin Club students over winter break. She checks in about their well-being. She takes the upperclassmen on educational trips to Rome. My older son built an actual life-sized chariot his senior year. These are experiences unmatched anywhere else in the school. Ms. Holmes has consistently gone above and beyond in ensuring her students' success, offering extra help, designing enriching activities, and fostering an environment of trust and respect. Cutting the salary of Mariah Holmes would not only fail to solve the budget deficit, it would cause irreparable harm to our students. As you well know and appreciate, the value a teacher brings to the classroom extends far beyond a salary figure. We can see her value every day in the life she touches, the inspiration she fosters, and the way she empowers our students to achieve their fullest potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Jessica Kaplan.
Hi, I'm Jessica Kaplan, the World Language Chair, and I want to wish you a happy National World Language Week. Dear Superintendent Luff and School Committee, I respectfully urge you to reconsider the elimination of Latin at Norwood High School. First, while this cut has been termed a reduction, it would in reality mean the complete elimination of Latin from Norwood Public Schools. As a result, Norwood High School would only offer two world languages, French and Spanish. In comparison, high schools across Massachusetts typically offer three to six language options. While the loss of Latin, with the loss of Latin, Norwood High School's world language offerings would be greatly diminished. In fiscal year of 2016, we lost one full-time position leading to the unfortunate elimination of the Italian program, a program wildly supported by the Norwood community. These cuts resulted in overcrowding in Spanish classes with class sizes swelling to 26 to 30 students. There are 21 anxious eighth graders excited to start Latin next year, and at a minimum, another 24 students currently in Latin I who anticipate continuing on to complete their graduation requirement. Eliminating Latin will force our rising ninth graders to compromise on one of their first real decisions of their high school careers. Our current Latin I students have an even bleaker future: an hour every day staring at a screen with no peer-to-peer interactions, no teacher to support as they navigate a year of online learning, which in 2020 we realized was less than ideal. Additionally, these students will not have the opportunity to secure three years of a world language, which is necessary for applying to four-year colleges. Latin's true value lies in its accessibility to diverse learners. Many students choose Latin because they thrive in an environment that emphasizes reading and writing over spoken communication. Mrs. Holmes has been a tireless advocate for her students through her 10 years at Norwood High School. She is one of the few teachers in the building managing four distinct preps, often instructing multiple levels within a single class. To put this in perspective, a typical NHS teacher with five classes has five class lists. Mrs. Holmes juggles 11. She continuously differentiates her instructions to meet the needs of her students, revising curriculum as necessary based on shifting course structures and student placements. Beyond the classroom, Mrs. Holmes has been an unwavering supporter of student engagement in the Latin program. She has faithfully led the Latin Club, where students immerse themselves in Roman cultural traditions such as Saturnalia and Lubrachalia. She has successfully organized a student trip to Italy and is currently planning a trip to Greece in April. Despite the uncertainty surrounding her program, she has remained dedicated and collaborative member of the World Language Department, playing a key role in organizing our Celebration of Languages and Cultures event which is happening tomorrow night. Additionally, Mrs. Holmes is the Vice President of CAM, the Classical Association of Massachusetts, and has planned their spring meeting to take place at Norwood High School in May. I recognize the complexity of the budget process, but I urge you to consider the profound impact of eliminating the Latin program. The value of Latin and Mrs. Holmes' bring to the Norwood community is immeasurable. Thank you for your time.
Next, I have Ridley Lomino.
Hello. All right. My name is Ridley Lomino, and I am a member of the Latin I class. I'm going to be honest, my thoughts about Latin class were pretty negative at first, especially with my loaded schedule and other difficult classes. There's so much to keep track of with all the grammar, the verb endings, and the noun forms. Then it all changed. A few months ago, one of my other classes had a really big assignment due, and everything really felt miserable. That's when I decided to look at school with a different perspective. It then clicked. Latin's not a language class. Instead, it teaches students important life lessons. Not everything in life is going to make perfect sense or have a reason. Sometimes our schedules are going to be loaded, but we still have to make it work and maintain balance. The answers aren't always straightforward and require digging to find, almost like deciphering a code. And most important, when you're struggling, you can always count on your teacher to light the way. McGeestra Holmes is an amazing teacher, and she makes an incredibly difficult subject that is Latin so much fun to learn. And like the powerful Titan god Atlas, she holds up the Latin department of Norwood High School alone. Lately, she's seemed really down, and I don't want her to lose this job that she loves so much. Please reconsider getting rid of the Latin program. Sincerely. Yeah.
Thank you. Next, I have Kyle Lynch.
Hello, my name is Kyle Lynch, and I'm a student currently taking Latin at Norwood High School. Here are my reasons why I think I should stay. The reason why you should help me, should stay, is that it's a really fun language to take, and it's very fun and helps me expand my use of the language and also read old texts that we do sometimes in class. Another reason why it helps me is that Ms. Holmes is a very nice teacher, and she helps me when I'm struggling in class and helps me get through it and guides me what to do and when I should do it. I would like this class to stay because it's really fun because I like to collaborate with my classmates and like to do fun projects. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, next I have Mariah Holmes.
Firstly, thank you so much to faces familiar and new to this year. It's so humbling to see so many of you here. And here is my comments to the Norwood School Committee. The years surrounding the COVID pandemic saw many challenges for students, families, and educators. In an environment of extreme uncertainty and increased fear of the unknown, we witnessed startling changes in student engagement and willingness to take risks in the classroom. This environment undeniably shaped students' course selection behaviors. Many students were paralyzed with apathy, hesitant to explore new academic avenues, and instead choose subjects with which they were already familiar. Latin, as the only world language department offering not taught in the middle school, was disproportionately affected by this trend. While enrollment numbers in the last few years have certainly been affected by the pandemic, it is important to note that the Latin program has rebounded in the last two years. The current ninth grade class includes an enthusiastic and a wonderful group of Latin students, and strong numbers have also been expressed in the rising eighth grade. These students' continued interest demonstrates that there is a dedicated cohort ready to advance in the subject. This momentum could easily extend to future years with proper support and outreach. It's also important to note that the value of the Latin program has never lied in having the highest enrollment numbers. Instead, its value is measured by its ability to offer a complete academic program that would normally fall under the responsibility of several teachers within a department. A single Latin instructor must prepare for multiple preps, often covering five distinct courses in a single day with honors level and college-level learners combined in the same room at the same time. This requires an extraordinary breadth of content mastery, adaptability, and instructional planning. A Latin teacher earns her salary. If we consider this workload through the lens of a history teacher, for example, a comparable teaching load would mean that a single educator in a single day might teach combined-level world history, combined-level psychology, AP US history, combined-level criminology, and combined-level economics, an expectation that would be considered highly unreasonable if not impossible. The Latin program historically delivers this level of scaffolding and depth within a single teacher's workload, ensuring that all students have access to a full and enriching language program despite operating with extremely limited resources. There are many benefits to offering Latin in any school district. Here in Norwood, offering Latin provides a crucial opportunity for some of our most vulnerable learners. We have a segment of our student population who traditionally struggle to find enjoyment and success in their world language class in middle school. Students who face difficulties with pronunciation, auditory comprehension and processing, or a speaking-intensive coursework of a spoken language find that studying Latin with its greater emphasis on reading and writing allows them to thrive in a way they had not experienced in their studies in French or Spanish. Students who must fulfill a two-year world language graduation requirement deserve to have more than two choices available to them. For our struggling students, Latin can offer a pathway to fulfill their graduation requirements while uniquely meeting their specific needs as learners.
Ms. Holmes, I'm sorry, the three minutes has expired. We do have a couple more people on the list. Thank you. Next I have Dr. Frank Adams.
Hi, Frank Adams, town meeting member and parent of a ninth grader taking Latin. Much of what I wanted to say actually has been said, and has been said pretty well. I want you to take a look at the number of students here. I never would have imagined that this number of students would have showed up to support Latin, right? I also want you to know that my son and at least five more are not here because of a band competition, or jazz competition that's happening right now. So I know that a, a number of students would love to be here that just couldn't be. When my son Riley talks about school, it's usually about Latin. When he connects something that happens in school to something and applies it to his everyday life, it's usually Latin. He'll pick a word and say, "Hey, I know the Latin root to that," or say, "Oh, this, I know this animal," or this, um, the scientific name of this organism because of something that ties back to Latin. Uh, he'll see, he'll be watching TV and see a legal term and be like, "Oh, that's La... That's Latin." So it, it pervasive in, in our everyday life. Um, I never took Latin myself. I, um, but I also wanna say that I find myself often defending Norwood education. I think Norwood in many ways has an inferiority complex, considering the towns around us, right? And I think that, that a Norwood education is second to none. And please, I don't, I, I want you guys to, to understand that I truly believe that, and please don't prove me wrong. But, but I think eliminating an entire program is not gonna make, um... Not gonna make a whole lot of, um, room here for, in the budget. And, and I don't envy the task that you have before you. I, I truly feel for that. But, um, but thank you.
Um, and then I have Sienna Powers.
Hi. I'd like to start off by talking about my teacher. She's the most passionate teacher I've ever had, and she not only cares about us as students, but as people as well. She actively teaches us instead of just handing us papers and saying, "Do it yourself." I've, I've never had a teacher like her. I've had a lot of teachers who seem like they don't wanna teach. They seem like they don't care about being teachers. But our teacher actually cares. I'm in the healthcare pathway, so I wanna be a nurse when I grow, I grow up, which is one of the reasons why I took Latin. Latin's really important to me because it teaches me things that healthcare wouldn't teach me, and it connects to my future profession, hopefully. And I chose this for my future academic success. And like, look at all the kids that came here today. Most of them are in Latin One. So we've only been in school, this is our, today. It's halfway through term three. And we're so connected with this class. This, this, um, problem isn't something that we need to worry about. We shouldn't have to worry about cutting classes because of budget cuts. And we shouldn't have to worry about things that make us grow up too fast, but all of us came here tonight anyways. Like, we've cut so many classes already. I was talking with my mother, and she said she had home ec and woodworking. And what's next? We cut math and science? Latin gives you a challenge that you need to overcome. Every day I go into class, and I'm excited to learn, not because it's easy, but because I know I'm gonna learn something, and I know there's a challenge that I'm gonna be able to overcome. And Mrs. Holmes makes class really fun, and she gets everyone engaged, and she makes sure everyone's like getting where they need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's everybody that I have that signed in on the list, but we do have a few more minutes left in the, um, public comment period. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak at this time? Please stop up. Can you just introduce yourself?
Hello, I'm James Guy. I'm a senior taking Latin Four. And I would say that Latin has been the single most impactful decision I have made in my high school career. It has allowed me to make so many connections. I've grown so incredibly close with all the students that I have been with, including the four others who have stuck with it through Latin Four. It has given me opportunities I could have never dreamed of otherwise. Back in tenth grade, I was able to go on a trip to Italy that expanded my worldview in a way I never thought possible. I discovered the wonder of traveling, and that's all thanks to Ms. Holmes and the opportunity she provided. The Latin programs, Latin Club, which is associated with it, has made so many memories. When I think of my freshman year back in high school, I don't think of many of the classes. I think about the pumpkin carving activity we had when the seniors in class above me just seemed so interesting, and I wanted to be involved. I'm now the club president of the Latin Club, and it has now taught me parts of leadership, and I've, and has allowed me to become involved in the school community in ways that I've never thought possible. Ms. Holmes has taught so many lessons as a teacher. She shows us how to get through hard times. When learning is tough, she tells us about how effort and everything allows us to push through it. I am very bad at spelling, as many of my students know, and through Latin, I have known that if I apply myself, I can learn how to spell these, all these words in this language that not all I can always understand. And again, with all this considered, I implore you to just reconsider your decision to cut the Latin program. Thank you.
Okay, um, is there anyone else? Can you just introduce yourself?
I'm Braden Allen. I'm a freshman in high school. I take Latin One. I'm not a very, I've never been a good student when it comes to world language. And I, uh, I've always been a, usually a failing member of that. And this year, I found myself getting way more opportunities to make up that work that I've always struggled with and not done. During times I've, like, I haven't done my work, I've been disruptive, and she's constantly been like, uh... She's like, gave me opportunities to make up the work, or she'll be understanding what I've done, and she'll never like judge me for what I act. And even though, she just gives me the opportunities I've never gotten from other classes when I'm failing. She gives me, she, uh, constantly contacts my teachers, my family, and myself about work that I've not done, reminding me and getting me the help that I just need in terms of work that I've not done before or just need to do. And it's given me an ability to get my grade up and have an opportunity to just become a better student overall. It's allowed me to make new friends I didn't have before. I have, find myself, I'm in Latin Club. It puts me with a lot more people that I get to learn and know. And just in general, I get to talk to more people. And it's just great to have a thing there. It sucks to see a teacher that's so nice to me get, have to go through this. And the class just opens me up to so many new things. And I'm really gonna miss that if it goes away. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, we are just about at time for the thirty minutes of our... We have two minutes. Is there anybody else wish to speak at this time?
Hi, my name is Emma Gaetley. I am a freshman taking Latin One. I just wanna start off by saying Ms. Holmes is a great teacher. She has taught me like how to be respectful with other students and work with other students well. She sent me a postcard over break, like just saying, "Have a good break." I don't want this class to go because it's really helped me. I have dyslexia, and it's really helped me with my reading, and I've found I got a better grade in ELA taking Latin. And I usually fail like for language. So, and this year I've gotten Bs and Cs in this class, which is really good for me. I just think, um, this class shouldn't go, so reconsider.
Thank you. Okay, that puts us exactly for thirty minutes. Unfortunately, we won't be able to take any other public speakers this evening. Um, I do wanna, so at seven fifty-three, I'm gonna declare public comment closed. Um, I do wanna thank everybody who spoke this evening. Um, please do stay if you wish, or if you do not wish. Feel free, you don't have to stay. But thank you very much for everybody that spoke. Absolutely.
This is on our agenda. As we discuss the budget, um, just, we can't discuss it now in public comment. But if you want to stay, we will be coming back to this conversation later on in the agenda. We have a couple appearances that I don't wanna bump because I greatly respect Mr. Kent and, uh, Mr. Ricardi's time.
Feel free.
Well, I don't know if you wanna say that, Mr. Ricardi, but the conversation may be a while.
No, no, it's to later today.
No, 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 no.
To another day.
No, not another day. That is not what I said, Mr. Ricardi. Um, just to make the connection to the agenda, that this is part of our budget discussion tonight, and I just want people to know that at this time.
Okay, alright, um, so we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, um, is appearances. Uh, first appearance on our agenda is Mr. Paul Ricardi to discuss the facilities budget with us.
Good evening. It's a very difficult act to follow. As I, as I look at our, uh, facilities budget going into next year, I wanna thank the Budget Balancing Committee, because I think, I know they did a great job under hard times. The budget is up five point four percent from last year. A good chunk of that is in salaries. Um, when they negotiated the contract for the custodians and for the, um, tradesmen, most of them were all at the maximum step. So in the three-year contract, they added a step. So that step comes into play July first. So there's a cost of living adjustment and a step increase. They took into consideration, um, potentially gas bills. Our gas bills for, um, January and February went up fifty percent. It's a little scary. And so that's been adjusted. But, um, and right now, we're at, um, actual expenditure for this year's budget, we're at almost fifty-one percent. If you add the encumbrances in, we're at about seventy percent. So we're right on target. We still have, um, some money available for unforeseen things that come up, and we've already had two of those this year. We had the, uh, hot water tank at the high school, four hundred and sixty-five gallon tank that let go after twelve years. We have, um, the condensate tank at the town hall that we have to replace as soon as we can shut the heat off. So, and those are like thirty thousand dollar jobs. So there is a cushion of money in there that takes care of the unforeseen stuff that comes up. So, um, with that, again, I wanna make it short so you can get back to these folks here. But, um, I think we're in good shape.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, it's been a very collaborative process. So the superintendent and I met with, with Mr. Ricardi and his, his, um, staff back in December seventeenth, and then we met again at, uh, with the town manager, with, um, Mr. Mazzucco. A couple times, it's been very collaborative. We've had a chance to go line by line before it went to BBC, and, you know, we, we, we agree with this budget.
Question for you. Are we getting any relief from the gas?
So far, it's the same relief that we're all getting in our houses.
Yeah.
They're just gonna push it off to the, you're gonna pay it.
You're gonna pay it in the summer, yeah.
So it's...
Just wondering. I didn't know if commercial accounts got the same.
Yeah, no, they did.
Do you anticipate, given the uncertainty around tariffs and procuring items, that budgets are gonna, how, how do you, how do you foresee that impacting your budget?
That's a great question. The other part of our budget that's rising the most is cleaning supplies.
Okay, that's not where you were going.
And, uh, that could get impacted by tariffs because they come from all over the world.
Okay. What about things like metal replacement? Like you were talking about hot water heaters and stuff.
Well, everything, everything is gonna go up. There, there's nothing that we touch that probably is not gonna be affected by a tariff.
Have you, um, do you anticipate shortages? Not just price increases, but actual shortages?
Uh, I hope not. I hope not. We obviously have no control over that, but I hope not. And I'm hoping those tariffs are short-lived, that they're just a negotiating tool. And they're gonna work it all out because it appears to me that it's costly to everybody, and no one wins in the long run.
If we could just clarify, um, I emailed you earlier, Mr. Manion, the, the number that we have from you, Mr. Ricardi, is just slightly different than the number we saw at BBC?
Every, every year.
I wasn't gonna call that out.
No, that's okay, because that's the number I got. So somebody changed it, and I found out tonight from Sean.
Okay. It's not, it's not vastly different, but this happens every year since we went over to our facilities, and I just wanted to.
Yeah.
So, um, I'll, I'll update everybody more on our last BBC meeting in a bit, but, um, the BBC did overwhelmingly support the joint facilities budget. There was a brief discussion of asking you to reduce by thirty thousand. Nobody wanted that to happen. So the number that I see in our packet is nine million, um, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars. Is that the number that is gonna go to FinCom and then to Town Meeting?
I guess so. That's not the, I got a number that's a little high here, but it's only a couple of thousand.
The nine-four number? What do you, what do you have?
I got nine million, three thirty-nine point thirty.
Because at BBC, the number we approved... Sean, do you have that in front of you? I just closed my document.
Mr. Ricardi, you have nine, three, three, nine, eight, thirty?
I have nine, three, three, nine, eight, thirty, yes.
That's what I said, right?
Yeah.
So I do have the right.
Okay.
The streak is broken.
Well, no, because at BBC, we had a little bit higher, um, nine million, three hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-one. I'm fine with either. I just wanna make sure we're clear on what we're sending to FinCom and then to Town Meeting.
We can confirm with them, and they'll have to go with the number, you know, after tonight, we voted, I guess. I can communicate with them and say, "This is the number we voted."
And on the spreadsheet you gave us, um, I know it has been called out for the last couple of years that we'll need additional custodians for the COPE League. How many extra positions?
So they are, we've actually just posted those positions because we wanna bring them on for April, May, and June. They are coming out of our existing budget. So some of these were moved around. So it's no net gain cost to the town for those positions.
Okay, so the salary increase is the new contract and the second one?
Yes, yep.
But you are posting for two new custodians?
Yep, at the COPE League.
Any other questions?
Did this go before the Board of Selectmen yet?
We have not gone there.
So just as a reminder to everybody, our MOU says both the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen share joint budgetary oversight. We vote your vote on it before it goes to the Finance Commission, and I think it go to the Finance Commission, March twentieth?
Yes.
Is there anything you, before we vote, is there anything you would like for us to consider that hasn't been considered, anything?
Uh, no, I, I, I mean, this year, starting July, is gonna be okay. What scares me is the following couple of years.
Because of the age of the buildings?
No, because of money.
The cost of the...
Cost of the budget.
Yeah.
And needs. And so that we don't start competing with folks and students, teachers and students. You know? That's what concerns me.
If I could ask one more question, actually. So the snow and ice line?
Yep.
Before we went to a joint facilities model, that was under the School Committee authority, and we played a little bit of a game with it every year where if we needed to fund additional staff or things for students, we were able to say legally that we were gonna under-fund snow and ice, and then we could go back to Town Meeting and get that money after the fact.
So actually, two years, we funded zero.
We funded zero. So in the budget before me, it's two hundred forty-four thousand.
Right.
Two sixty-three.
Right.
Where are you currently on that with this year?
We're about a hundred and eighty thousand already spent.
So still on the conservative side?
Excuse me?
Still on the conservative side.
Yes, yes.
Joan's knocking on wood.
You said it's almost over, so I had to knock on wood.
Yeah, it is only the beginning of March.
It's only the beginning of March.
I just wanted to point that out because when we did go to the joint facilities, that did become one of the moving pieces under the authority of the School Committee that we no longer have throughout, that throughout the year. It's a different mechanism now. I'm not gonna report that.
Any other questions? Kate? Seconded by David. All those in favor?
Clarification, it's the number in front of us, not the BBC number?
The number in front of us, I'm sorry. Clarifying to vote for the nine million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty.
That's where we should go, because we never have the same number, right? have the same number, right?
You just don't always make sense.
So I'll take that, I'll take the vote again, just to be sure. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next person, the next appearance on our agenda is Mr. Joe Kidd, here to talk to us about the technology capital request.
Thank you very much.
Mind you all, we need to vote on for it gets Joe's to town meeting.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I actually presented this a little bit when we did the general budget side. Just to review this budget cycle, we're looking to replace the NHS Television Media Lab at the high school. 21 iMac computers that are used every single day with Adobe Creative Cloud software. The computers that are in there now are eight years old this year. A couple of years ago, we swapped out SSD drives and then to prolong them for a couple of years, but now it's time. Students just came back from STN conference and actually won a, I believe, won a silver medal for a live news broadcast that they went into, which is really cool. So, great program. I actually had two children that have gone through it, so speaking from experience, they do a great job. So we want to keep that going. And then the other lab is the Computer Science Lab. This is a little bit different. In the past, we originally had, in our original capital for the last few years, we had this lab coming up next year, and we had Phase Two of our wireless access point refresh this year, but we swapped that out, or flip-flopped it, really, because we rely on the E-Rate funding for our wireless access points. Our E-Rate budget is spent, it refreshes next year, so rather than pay 100% of the price, when we only pay 40%, we just swapped it out. The Computer Science Lab is five years old. Right now, anyway, we try to get six years out of our desktops, but, so it's not like we're swapping out a two-year-old lab, right? So, and it also ends up being about the same amount of money to swap. I think it would have been $75,000 we were asking for this year and $75,000 next year. Instead, it's a 78. Just to, Dr. Giblin's question earlier, tariffs?
Yep, I was going to ask you something.
It's a thing, it is absolutely a thing, and in fact, so we've heard from, I've reached out to vendors about this. Some are saying, yes, our prices are going up. Specifically, we're able to just today actually put in our order for our ninth-grade Chromebooks for this summer at the same price that we've had, we had with our middle-school Chromebooks, which is nice, so we're able to jump on that. We have our general budget, that's something that's funded every single year. So we're able to do that. I did hear back from another vendor that said our desktops are going to go up, are going up, but, you know, which does affect, will affect the Computer Science Lab refresh. We do, you know, the $30,000 budget is, you know, cushioned enough where I'm not too worried about it, but the Capital Outlay Committee did say during our meeting that they understood about the tariffs and that, you know, we still had some time to adjust if it comes back that it's going to be more than we thought. So this week, I'll, after hearing that from our vendors, this week, I'll reach out for another quote, just to get an updated quote and make sure that it's not way over what we have budgeted.
Any other questions on these items? I will tell you that from the Capital Outlay perspective, Capital Outlay supports, voted to support these items, so that.
Yeah, free cash.
From free cash, correct. Yep. And then just as a matter of policy, we obviously need to vote on this ourselves before it goes to forward to town meeting.
Just for clarity, we're only voting on the, this year's budget, not the, the rest of the plan is for FYI only for us to say, thank you.
Right, yep, just the FY26.
Move to approve.
Move by David, do I have a second?
What was it about? Ken, do we have a second about that?
Uh, yeah, so the.
70,000.
70,000. Yep, 70,000, yep.
No, you're fine.
Second.
Second by Kate. Any other discussion before we vote?
Just a quick discussion, for a variety of reasons, a more cognizant of what we say and what goes in our minutes, and I think as much clarity as we possibly can have, it's going to be very important over the next couple of years that the community understands our budget. So if Donna could actually put exactly what Joe proposed in the minutes, so it's the 40,000 for the NHS Television Media Lab at the high school, and it's the 30,000 for the NHS Computer Science Lab refresh, totaling the 70,000, but I think we need to be, there's a story that we have a responsibility to tell, and some people only read our minutes, and I would like us to just be really thoughtful of what goes in our minutes moving forward.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I was going to say, but that's past as five to zero. Kate's on delay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe.
Bye, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
I mean, there's nothing under late agenda, it's just TDD.
Yeah, I think we're going to be. So the next item on the agenda is our, would be normally our superintendent report, late agenda. Mr. Luff is not able to join us this evening, so we do not have the superintendent report. Is there any late agenda items? I don't believe we can, if they come up, correct? Okay, so we will be able to go right over that. So that brings us to our next agenda item, and we are going to move into budget. So Teresa, would you like to give us the Subcommittee BBC update?
Yes. How I was going to go about this is changing a little bit in my head. So just bear with me for one moment. When I ran for the School Committee in 2017, it was because things were happening and that I strongly felt I didn't want to happen. And on this seat, I have had to make some really challenging decisions, and equally with my heart and my brain, that's very often not in alignment. And when I was initially a School Committee member, Maya Bodenhoffer was on the School Committee, and she was very strongly in the budget, and I could be very vocal philosophically. And what has happened over the last eight years is I have had to be both. And sometimes what I philosophically, wholeheartedly believe in is not fiscally possible or sustainable. So in this past week, as a lot of community members were writing to us, I did spend some time putting together what I hoped was a helpful email explaining the context, and I want to give a little bit of that context now to recap what we talked about at our last School Committee meeting last Tuesday, and then tie it into what happened at BBC last Wednesday, and then what happened at Budget Balancing last Friday, and then where we are now. And then, once we get into the where we are now, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Mannion. But this is the time of the year where Anne-Marie and I, on the Budget Subcommittee, are in a lot of meetings. And beyond us, the administrative team, Mr. Mannion, Dr. Munoz, Mr. Luff, the principals, the department chairs are in a lot of meetings. We do have what I think right now is a pretty comprehensive budget website. Mr. Luff has been working with us to get all of our information on, so if you go to the NOR website and to the budget page, you can actually see all the material the School Committee has had access to since December. And I know it takes a lot of time to put the story together, so I'm going to try to succinctly do that for you now. We started, right, asking for an 8.1% increase, correct, Mr. Mannion? And throughout the BBC process, which Budget Balancing is two School Committee members, two Board of Selectmen members, two FinCom members. We have to balance the budget for the entire town. And right now, there are shared costs, which we're going to talk a little bit about tonight. There's the school budget, there's the general government budget, and then there is the Joint Facilities Department. So those are the four things that BBC looks at, and we all try to do our best to support our entire town. Last Tuesday, when we met, it was a remote meeting, because all of us work, and some of us were out of state, and we wanted to continue our budget work but needed to do it in a fashion in which we could come together. We didn't meet remotely to exclude anybody. We're within open meeting law to hold and post remote meetings. But we did have a remote meeting last Tuesday, that four of us were able to attend, one of us had a work conflict. At that meeting, which I think we're going to see in more detail from Mr. Mannion more, our administration brought to us tiers of reductions to our proposed budget. Nobody wanted to make reductions, but the reality is that the revenue stream of the town could not fund the 8.1% increase on our end, the 6% increase from the general government, and the 5.4% increase for the Facilities Department. We were initially asked by BBC to cut 1.2 million dollars from our budget. Last Tuesday, as a School Committee, we unanimously said, no, we're not going to cut up to 1.2. We did not want to get into Tier Two or Tier Three of the reductions that we're going to look at more tonight, and the vote of the committee and the direction that was given to Anne-Marie and I to go to BBC in was to not agree to go beyond the Tier One reductions. The Tier One reductions unfortunately included the reduction of the Latin 1FTE. The cost of the Tier One reductions, give me one second, was 828,697. Remember, we were asked to cut 1.2. The committee on Tuesday said to Anne-Marie and I, do not agree to reduce beyond that, and/or if you do, we would only entertain further reductions if we had reassurance from the BBC and from the FinCom that the projections were not too conservative, that the town was being very responsible in predicting what the budget will be for FY26. One of the things in our packet that, Dr. Munoz, if you could pull up in a moment, there is a very detailed memo from Maya Bodenhoffer, who is the Chair of both the BBC and the Finance Commission, and we can go over it, because she did what we asked, which was, please help Anne-Marie and I bring the information back to the School Committee about where the sources of revenue that sometimes turn into free cash, where are those local receipts, what are the predictions, what have been the trends? So we can go through that in a moment. After a lot of discussion at BBC on Wednesday, which I truly felt was very collaborative. I don't always feel that way, but I truly felt that last Wednesday's meeting was very collaborative. We looked at shared costs, and a positive is that the estimate of what Blue Hills Regional School District will cost the town actually went down from 150,000. So students who live in NOR but go to Blue Hills, the town has to pay that portion. Because it went down, that then opened up more money in the town budget for BBC to discuss where could that go. Now, fortunately, other things went up, as we talked about in our last School Committee meeting, and health insurance has gone up. It was only initially budgeted for FY26 at 8%. We now need to budget 10 and 1/2%, and that may still continue to increase. As we have talked about here before, as I know the Boards have talked about, there's real concern about depleting free cash. It is actually against the NOR town policies to use free cash to offset your operating budget, because you don't know if you're going to have that again next year. And I don't think anybody on the BBC, as an elected official, is saying we want our town to have another override. We understand that may happen, but nobody is currently saying we're ready to go to the town. The town has been, all of you have been so generous with operational overrides and overrides for our school building, and to the point of tariffs and inflation, the economy is really hard right now on everybody at every level. We had a discussion at BBC, looking again at all the different budgets. We, Anne-Marie and I, held strong that we were not going to reduce another 500,000, that it just was not possible in a responsible way to our students and staff to continue to reduce the school budget. So where we landed on Wednesday, February 26th, at the BBC, the OPEB, that's Retirement, correct? The OPEB Fund, the town was going to put $5,000 less into that. General Government, under Mr. Mazuko and the Board of Selectmen, are currently being asked to reduce the general government budget by another 100,000. I did not watch Board of Selectmen last night, I do not know where they are in that process. We wanted to protect the facilities budget, as you just heard us with Mr. Ricardi, we feel he really is down to bare bones, and we didn't want to reduce the joint facilities budget. But the BBC has asked the School Committee, which we need to discuss tonight under Mr. Mannion, a further reduction of only 55,000 beyond Tier One. As we talk about the budget tonight, obviously, we can revisit the Tier One, we can talk about what we heard from our community, but even with these steps, it will still be required that the town, asked town meeting in May, to utilize nearly 7.5 million dollars of free cash to support the schools, the town, joint facilities, and the shared cost. One of the things I know, Dr. Giblin, you brought up, and I think we all felt very strongly, was how is the town planning, and what is the town doing to plan for the future and save? Maya Bodenhoffer and Alan Slater at BBC, they are FinCom members, they talked at length about how the Finance Commission really wants a warrant at town meeting to put some of the current free cash into a stabilization fund to protect the town going forward. And Anne-Marie and I expressed on behalf of the School Committee, hopefully you all agree, that we would support the FinCom trying to get the Board of Selectmen to put that on the warrant, because we do want to plan for the future for all of us, town and schools. Let me just pause and see, I've thrown a lot of numbers. Do you have questions, my colleagues, on, from last Tuesday to what I'm sharing about Wednesday to where we are today?
When you mentioned that stabilization fund, is that the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, or is that the town-wide override?
So the override, yep, the great question.
Which stabilization fund are you talking about?
So a new one. A new one. So Mr. Mannion is going to talk to us in a few minutes about some warrant articles that we're going to try to bring to town meeting, including building up our Special Education Reserve Fund. The override stabilization fund is no longer in existence, that's fine. But I don't know exactly how the Finance Commission is planning toward this, I don't know if you know, Sean, what they're asking for.
They asked for funds to go into stabilization in the fall, and it wasn't voted in the fall meeting, so I think they're still hoping that some free cash can go to a stabilization. They're not referring to our Special Education Reserve. We're doing that on our own.
My question, should we get in?
Can I ask a follow-up to that? What do you mean, we are putting, we're doing that on our, you mean, we're putting that warrant article?
Yeah, you'll see in the warrant articles that we're suggesting for the school district, that we're trying to build up ours.
We don't have that money to just.
No, no.
We're asking for. That's our warrant, okay, got it. Sorry, thank you.
Is it worth it to talk about the memo now or in a couple of minutes?
No, I think we can talk about it now.
Which?
So the one that Maya.
The one that Maya sent. I appreciate it, and I know that we are in this place, and I'm trying to be positive as we move forward, but like, I also will always say this, that town budgets and school budgets are apples to oranges. There's a lot more oversight, and there's a lot more accountability on the school side because of DESI. Like, the State Department of Revenue does not come in and audit towns as DESI does with schools, full stop. So I know we've talked about the override, I know we talked about that when we went forward, we had a group in the late 20-teens that thought long and hard about this. We had asked for 10, and this seems to be a pattern where people do this, and we suggest we want 10, and then our people on the finance side say, no, we're going to cut it, we should only do five. I still, I still believe, had we done the original plan for that override, that we would be in much better shape. I get that. Now, moving forward, my question is, because we've known this from the fall, I don't understand, and no one has explained this to me, how, and I get building permits and how that works, but how we just didn't monitor it to an extent that it, there's 12 million dollars in that and another 7.5 million dollars in bonds? Like, if we're predicting, and we're doing these things, and we know that some of these things are in the pipeline, and just for those out there, so, right, you build something in town, there are permits, there's a fee, we have a hospital that's being rebuilt, we have a middle school that's being built, and we have a headquarters for a company that's being built. So I don't understand where that over, like, because again, 5 million, 7 million in any given year in free cash is a lot. We have like 28, and I just, I haven't heard a satisfactory answer as to why we were so off on that. So that's thing one. And then thing two is, as we talk about this and we go to enter in where they want to create, you know, a stabilization fund, I get that, I think that's a good fiscal planning, you know, but this overlaps a little bit with the middle school project, where if we're under budget for that, like, what monies do we have control of, and what monies are for the town? Because on the middle school building side, where that's a bond, and the state reimburses us for that, you know, there may be money left over. I know, Teresa, we've had conversations into the whole school committee, that we've had conversations about, we only build these buildings once every so often, and let's make the most use of that money. And it just feels like, again, like when it comes to that, if there's money that's being made off an MSBA bond, you know, like, what is, we should have stake in that.
So I did ask, just for your clarification, I did ask that question during the last BBC meeting, because we were.
Budget sub, I think.
Nope.
We talked about BBC?
Yeah, I asked, remember, I asked Maya to make sure that we were legally allowed to use the money in a way that.
I thought we asked Sarah.
Did I ask Sarah?
It was on Friday. I only want to, I'm only, so.
Good lord, we're going to have a big stuff.
If people go back to BBC, it won't be recording, it was in Budget Sub on Friday.
Okay, it was Budget Sub. I asked that question. I asked that question with Sarah. But, but that, you're right, it was Sarah. I did not ask it in BBC, they're all kind of melding together, too many budget meetings. But I did specifically ask that question, and Sarah was going to bring it back to the FinCom as well, but that, to make sure that we're not making plans for money, that we can't spend in a certain way, or that...
That you don't have the authority.
Correct, no, correct. And so, one of the things that we talked to Sarah about was going back and making sure with council, with Jeff on the town side, like, to make absolutely certain that we are able to spend the money in the ways that, because even us asking for a warrant.
Well, like, I also am going to ask Tim, to ask our lawyer, to look into MSBA rules, because I was told in no uncertain terms that we can't create a fund with money from the MSBA, and I want, I want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Yeah, and I think I also did hear that...
From town, you were told that.
From legal.
Yes, from the town.
Yeah, no, I did hear that as well, and, yeah.
There was some discussion that the leftover funds could be used on another school project, but it might need to go in front of town.
But leftover funds are, there's two different funds, to make sure that we're all keeping them the same. Leftover funds are diff, because of, because of the increase in the reimbursement, is different than the interest on the bond.
Totally.
So that's what, that's the...
Oh, the interest on, yeah. The interest on the bond is in the free cash.
Yes, which, but that was my question to Sarah, was to make sure, because there are potentially rules around that money being, the interest being made off of MSBA funds that we're sitting in an account, and making sure that we are using those within the parameters that we're allowed to use.
But even, even just that, if it's a formula, and the number was 150, and originally the state's giving us, let's say, I'm making up numbers, I'm lying right now, seventy-five million, it goes up to eighty-five million. If you spend a hundred forty-five, you're going to spend that seventy-five million the state reimburses you. It's that leftover funds, that yes, I mean, it would be my assumption, not as a lawyer, just as a, someone that's in this, like, right? Okay, if town meeting voted to vote those funds, then we would make a warrant, and as long as it wasn't, you know, it was just leftover from the original town monies that are also used to build that project, that then we could easily just go to town meeting and ask them to do something with that.
Yeah. So, all those points, we, I think we do need clarity, I think, a hundred percent. And that was what my specific question to Sarah in Budget Subcommittee was around the interest money, and making sure that, because while that is right now lumped in with all of the rest of free cash, and we're making a lot of assumptions on seven point five million, you know, putting things in stabilization funds, and are we even legally allowed to do that? And I wanted like one hundred percent clarity on it.
Yeah, okay.
Joan?
Joan?
Oh, sorry. No, no.
We, so, we have twenty-nine million, twenty-eight million, north of twenty-five million in free cash.
No longer. Do you want me to take you through the free cash?
I want to know where all that money went, yeah.
So we...
And I'd like to know why it's not going into a special ed stabilization fund.
Okay. So, in the fall, was it fall town meeting, November, October?
In the fall.
It was October, it was early this year.
Okay. So before fall town meeting, free cash gets certified, one, start there.
September.
September.
Okay. So every September, free cash is certified. Free cash comes from building permits?
Yep.
Local receipts, which we'll go through Maya's memo. It can also come from, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, if the revenue you predicted, you had more revenue than you predicted, that wasn't built into your operating budget, right?
Yeah, Maya gives two things in her memo. Basically, either your revenue projections were under, which is the permits, and anything else revenue related, or your expenses come, revenues come in over what you projected, expenses come in under what you projected. So if facilities has a balance, it's going to be part of free cash. For the school department, Maya explains, we pretty much put our money in circuit breaker or stabilization, so we don't really leave any money at the end of the year, but all the other town departments, whatever's left unspent goes to free cash, plus whatever revenues came in above what they needed.
Yes.
That's the permits, that's the interest.
Okay. So starting in the fall, there was twenty-nine million dollars free cash certified. Nine million of that, a little under nine million, was allocated at fall town meeting. Anne Marie, was that all capital?
It was capital projects.
For capital projects.
So... It was the pool, the water towers, the, it was like all those big, big, big money capital.
The mini buses.
The mini buses, yeah, we got five mini buses, yeah, so all those big projects.
So then when we started to resume our BBC meetings in January, at our January twenty-third meeting, there was twenty million six hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars in free cash. Okay? What was, sorry, I have like so many notes.
You can just use big round numbers with them.
I like specifics. So the, the meeting last week, as we ended BBC, we are planning to use seven million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that twenty-six for the FY26 budget.
Okay.
Okay? So then, what is not under our authority of school committee, but under really the authority of the FinCom through discussions at BBC, but really under the authority of FinCom, is to help guide the town and recommend to the town, how should the rest of that free cash be utilized? Part of that is a conversation they're having, I don't know exactly what they're having, I do know they meet every Thursday, so for those of you who are trying to take what we talk about here and apply it to the town, FinCom has a meeting tomorrow, we go back to FinCom on the thirteenth, on the twentieth, I know Mr. Ricardi is there, with joint facilities, and then we go back to FinCom again on March twenty-seventh. At that point, they will hopefully vote in support of our budget, because then everything has to go to the budget book for town meeting. So FinCom is having a discussion, I don't know how much, but to set some of the free cash into a stabilization fund for the whole town to plan for the future. One of the things under our authority that Mr. Mannion is going to talk about is we want to ask at May town meeting for some money to go into our already established special education reserve fund.
So the conversation right now is around thirteen million that hasn't already been allocated in free cash?
Roughly, yeah.
And we are using seven million of the free cash towards our operating budget in violation of our own policies?
Yeah. Violation of the town's policies, yes.
Sweet. Okay. So, and we're really, is the conversation considering that extra thirteen million just as one lump sum, or?
Yes. And that's why...
Is there a rationale for that?
As opposed to?
Uh, splitting it seven and seven? Uh, that's too much. Splitting it six point five and six point five, six point five into the special ed stabilization and six point five into the...
We can't have, we can't have six point five in the special ed stabilization, we're capped.
We're capped at five?
No, so we can currently only have up to two percent of our net school spending, excuse me. One of the items, it's lost, one of the items that we're going to talk about...
We're near there.
What?
If it's two percent of our...
Net school spending.
Oh, net school spending, yeah.
So, that's the amount the town has to contribute towards, your local education. One of the things we'll talk about later in our advocacy is that I would recommend, we encourage the state to change that we can have up to four percent of net school spending, special education, but right now, we can only have up to two percent.
Net school spending is not our total budget, I was confusing it with our total budget, sorry.
I know exactly where your brain went.
We're way under that, let's move. Okay.
So last Tuesday, again, the three things that the direction of the committee, that Anne Marie and I, the BBC, was not agree to reduce up to the 1.2 million, and we didn't, okay? So we're not looking at an additional five hundred thousand, we need to discuss an additional fifty-five thousand beyond tier one, and/or revisit tier one, if that's the direction the committee wants to go. The second direction was ask and clarification around savings, which the Finance Commission is going to try to do. Now, it's up to Board of Selectmen if they're going to put it on the warrant or not. I had expressed that the school committee supports the Finance Commission in doing that, hopefully the Board of Selectmen will put it on the warrant. And then the third ask from last Tuesday was to get the reassurance from BBC and FinCom that the projections are not too conservative. So that goes into the memo that we have from Maya, and I thank Maya, because this is very comprehensive, because of course it is, that's how she approaches everything. But Sean, maybe you could give the highlight of the memo, you'll probably talk about it more succinctly than I will.
Yeah, let me pull up Maya.
I mean, the basics of it was...
The basics are what we said, which are, there's two sources, basically the schools don't generally leave any balance at the end of the year, because we have mechanisms for carrying forward. The free cash comes from two places, it comes from revenues that are over, and it comes from expenditures on the town side that are under. But I should mention, one of those revenues is free cash. So let's, if this town uses seven and a half, eight million of the twenty million in free cash, and if the, if the remaining portion isn't put into a stabilization, it falls to the next year's free cash. What I mean to say by that is, you know, there's going to be a budget gap in the following year, so, and they don't expect the same windfall in free cash in the following year. So to the extent that more of that free cash just goes to the next year, it could propel through another budget season or so, but eventually, there's probably going to be a need for an override. So perhaps you can make it another year or so, if you can use this windfall of free cash to keep going. Now, you could put it in stabilization funds, that's one way to do it, those take votes to get the money out. If you let it just fall to free cash, it could be allocated in the fall again to capital outlay or something, so you have to work through that, but it could also be available for the following year's budget.
The bottom line is, is Maya's memo did not say that they were being too conservative. That's how I read that memo.
She found really strongly that through work, that she herself is Chair of the Finance Commission, but the Finance Commission as a whole, with Jeff O'Neill, that it was, it was not too conservative. And then she provided some graphs and some history to support that.
The BBC was very, everybody arrived at figures that everybody was comfortable. The discussion all along was that this is more free cash than has ever been used, and everybody is against doing that. But the other hand, when you have a windfall of free cash, it doesn't seem like a good time to be cutting lots of services and things when you're, when you have a lot of cash. So it's the balance between those, and they had asked us to come down 1.2, and, you know, we finally landed it at the amount we did, it's like eight hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, I think the final, you know, feeling in that room was, like, we can't, they obviously, with as much free cash as we had, and I want the public to understand that, that, you know, sure, that free cash could have supported our eight point one percent ask, but that is also going to, yes, that's going to hurt us going forward, because next year, when we don't have that money, we don't have that windfall, we still are trying to support all the things that we brought up with that eight point one percent, and now we're cutting things doubly next year. So it's, we really are trying to be, while still growing the district, being a little more, trying to be fiscally responsible.
Instead of cutting eight eighty, you're cutting eight million.
Yeah, so I just want people to understand, like, that yes, there is still free cash sitting on the table, and that doesn't feel good when there are things that we're asking to not have in this budget. But there, there are reasons to not spend all of that free cash in one sitting, and I know we wouldn't be spending all of it for certain, to put specific things back in, but we do have to think about the next two, one to two budget cycles, and trying to stretch this as far as we can, because another operational override would be a very large hill to climb over, in my opinion, but...
Dr. Muniz, could you quickly open the memo that we have from Mr. Luff under the budget update?
The memo for him?
Yeah, the memo that he submitted on the FY26 budget.
Can I ask one more question about BBC?
Do you want to go to the next item, or do you want to...
I just want to quickly recap what we talked about on Friday, and then I'm going to hand it over to you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Teresa, can I ask one more question about it?
Yeah, of course. It's on the agenda. JJ? Sorry.
Same question that I asked Mr. Kidd and Mr. Ricardi. So, maybe we're having the DOE eliminated? Is there any planning around what may happen if we lose funding in that area?
Yes, so let me talk about this first, and then Sean gives his presentation, and then we'll come back to that, if that's okay.
Yep.
So, again, we came out of BBC on Wednesday with the ask that in addition to the tier one reductions that we voted on on Tuesday, we reduced an additional fifty-five thousand. On the spreadsheet, this is mostly what we voted on last Tuesday. So we had set a reduction of thirty-seven thousand for some technology, that was largely thought exchange, the software that Mr. Luff has been using to really engage with our community. There was restructuring of five FTEs in the district in order to support five of the necessary positions at the Coakley next year, when it's a five through eight. One of those five is the Latin position, that we've been hearing a lot about, that is three hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars. There was a reduction of one hundred thousand dollars for curriculum refresh, because Mr. Luff and Dr. Muniz felt we could start a refresh and then carry it over in FY27.
Right, because the actual refresh won't be implemented till the following year anyways.
So we still will keep our commitment to do curriculum refresh, but it'll be between two fiscal years.
Yes.
And then we had looked at reducing some textbooks, instructional materials, and PD at the tune of eighty thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. I was like, am I hearing myself in my head? The higher down savings or turnover savings, there's a couple different terms going around right now, how we talk about that, that was at two oh five?
Was it two hundred?
Two hundred even. It was two hundred even, okay.
Two hundred.
Yes, okay, sorry. It was at two hundred thousand when we last voted on Tuesday. On Friday's Budget Subcommittee meeting, Anne Marie and I, with Sean and with Tim, we really strongly do not want to get into the tier two reductions. The tier two reductions could be a teacher at the Oldham, could be an additional teacher at the high school in either English or science. It would remove funding to have our transportation drivers get an increase in their salaries, which we know looking at the market is necessary. And there are some other things in there that we, the school committee on Tuesday, said we don't want to get into tier two. So, at Budget Sub on Friday, when we were looking at the turnover savings, higher down savings, if you look at the trend of the past years, we typically are budgeting between three hundred and four hundred thousand in higher down savings. So Sean and Tim looked at this number in more detail, and they increased it from two hundred thousand to two fifty-five. If we go with what is on here, we don't have to talk about reducing fifty-five thousand more. Okay, so that's where we left coming out of Budget Subcommittee on Friday. But I think Sean should probably walk us through things a little bit more, and then, Joan, not to, we will come back to your question, because there is some uncertainty, unfortunately, from the federal government, and the potential to lose some federal funding that we should talk about, because we will not be able to concretely know by the end of March if those fundings get eliminated or not.
Okay. All right, so why don't you pull back up the memo real quick, I'll just talk off that real quick, and then we'll go through the slides. So Superintendent Luff presented this, this budget memo that we started to look at, and I should say, we also have Dr. Gallagher and Ms. Durene on here to answer questions about the high school when we get into the discussion at time. So, based on the BBC, we came back from, from BBC to reduce the tier ones, which are shown here, and we just talked about those, as well as an additional fifty-five thousand. The, we're not actually reducing any Coakley positions, so if you go back to the original budget, we were adding nine point six positions for Coakley, it's actually nine point eight now, because we're also shifting a point two music from the elementary to the middle school. But there is a reduction in five, it's a lot of shifting, so it allows us to move one wellness to the middle school, as well as two librarian positions are going to be reduced. This is all due to the discussions we've had about the elementary schedule and moving to a different schedule. It does include the Latin reduction at the high school. The superintendent goes on to say that we don't believe there will be many educators impacted by this change, we're going to do our best based on the licensure to give people the opportunity to move into other positions within the district. We go on to talk about tier two, while we aren't recommending tier two right now, we should be cognizant that we can't guarantee some of these positions as we move forward. So the budget that we had preliminary, we have a warrant article for Medicaid mass health funds, and we're moving two positions to those funds, we're asking for a warrant to sort of cede the money for a year, and then we're also hoping to add a third position. There's some question about those funds, based on what we're hearing from the federal government about Medicaid. We may need to look later in the spring about adding some of those positions into the budget, and maybe looking at the tier twos, but when we discussed it, we didn't feel like it was the right time to do that right now. We have a balanced budget with using the extra higher down savings in tier one, we can put forward a balanced budget at this point in time. But if you read the memo, you'll see that we may need to revisit some aspects of the tier two, which you see here, it's the curriculum coordination piece, there's an elementary It's the curriculum coordination piece, there's an elementary position, there's a high school position, which could be ELA or, I think it says, or science. And then there is, it's not all of the transportation salary increases, but it would cut back what we could give as increases for the transportation. It would make us less competitive and means we would probably likely need to use contractors more.
Which is more expensive.
So superintendent's recommending that once we know more about the town warrant and the Medicaid, that we, and we will come back and look at the curriculum coordination and the high school position. We just don't need to make that decision right now. However, we do believe that making a shift in Latin in the spring will be difficult. So he says, I will share that we can make easier shifts in the spring regarding the high school position, because there are so many sections. While making a shift on Latin in the spring, if you were to decide to move it into tier two, would be more problematic, as students are currently making their world language requests already. So just wanted to point out that part. And then he goes on to discuss, we discuss Latin and the enrollment. We've received many emails and letters in support of the program. That said, the program currently provides services for only 35 students. Goes on to list the number of students. And there's also a memo that's linked from Dr. Gallagher here that you, you have as backup. So this is not just a budget decision, but one that would have to be considered regardless because of the low enrollment. So we currently have 22 students who have made requests for ninth grade. However, that number of consistent will likely decrease. Clubs and activities are not on the tiered reduction list. Online Latin costs would be approximately 8,127. And as discussed, world language requests are currently being made. So this is not a decision that we would recommend changing at this time. Why don't I just go through the other slides very, very quickly, and then we can have discussion and talk about the vote. So this is just a quick overview of where we're at in the budget, so you can see sort of how it's tracked. Right, our preliminary budget had an increase of 11.6 FTEs, not close to 5 million, 8.1%. Now we're at an increase of 6.6 FTEs, so minus the five, we're closer to 4 million. We've reduced the 880,000, and a 6.7% budget increase is what we're, we're currently at. This shows all the different areas, but you can remember, if you go to the top, collective bargaining is 3.8%, transportation's 1.5, the 9.6 positions for the middle school is 1.2%. We have two other positions at 0.4% and other increases that got us up to the 8.1. And then down at the bottom, we reduced the five positions in the $55,000 to get us down to 6.7%. We have done some budget transfers, because we voted that budget transfer that cleaned up some of the salary lines, but nothing has really changed here. You know, salaries, the largest driver of our budget, with steps and lanes and everything else, as well as the cola. Go to the next one. This is just an updated version of the overall budget increase by the different functional areas. The largest area, of course, is instruction. We have one increase in one FTE in the district leadership, which is the new position, the Director of Safety. And then we have 5.6 net increase. Nine point, you know, this middle school's going up by 9.8, but there's other reductions in the elementaries that are bringing it down to a total increase of 6.6 FTEs. And then this just goes through these, if you, if you want to look, it shows them updated. But I won't go through those unless anybody wants to see.
Thank you. Love it, Desi.
So I guess there is a recommendation on a vote. We are asking for a vote if I, if we look back. Vote to approve the current tier one reductions as described as a component of the FY26 budget process. That's the action at the end of the memo.
And that includes increasing the turnover savings to the 255?
Yes, in the memo, that's all sort of included. It's basically tier one plus 55.
Right.
Any questions for Mr. Mannion, any discussion?
I mean, we've been pretty consistent with this, but that's also sort of the recommendation coming from the school committee itself, but your work with budget sub, finance.
This is where we left off on Friday as a budget sub, but wanted to bring it back to the full committee, of course, and have heard from our community on some of the decisions from last Tuesday, so that merits discussion. Real quickly, what happens next, so next, whatever we decide tonight, is what we will take to the Finance Commission next Thursday. So Anne Marie and I, Mr. Mannion, and Mr. Luff will be with the Finance Commission to talk about our budget. And then we meet again the following Wednesday, the 19th. That is our official budget hearing. That is when people can come and speak to us. It's still for only three minutes per person, but there is actually no time limit. It's for however long the budget hearing needs to go. After that budget hearing, we will again talk, based off of any feedback we receive. And then we need to finalize our vote on March 26, because then on March 27, we go to the Finance Commission for their vote of approval. So that's what we have left for this month of March.
I've got a little budget season. Yes, Joan?
Can I ask Dr. Gallagher and Ms. Durain a question?
Absolutely.
I'm going to put you on the spot, Dr. Gallagher and Ms. Durain. I apologize, but in your memo, you give us some numbers around costs. Is there any way to contextualize that? We only have the cost for the Latin program, but not for, say, Spanish or French. Is there any way for you to contextualize that for us, so that I get a better sense of what those numbers mean? Is it more expensive to run Latin than it is to run Spanish and French? That's what I'm asking.
Would you mind, if you're going to say more than no? Just because the mic, the mic won't pick you up all the way back there.
Okay, so you, we have projected funding, right, in your memo, projected funding?
For online coursework.
Oh, that's just for the online coursework?
Yeah, that's for online coursework.
Got it, okay, never mind.
For students currently enrolled, if this decision were to be paid, what it would cost to provide online coursework for students currently enrolled in Latin next year.
Okay, sorry. I have no question for you then, I'm sorry. Good job.
Thank you.
This may be something that Dr. Gallagher may want to or could respond to, but just for the admin team, bear with me while I try to keep an organized thought train here. I want to first thank and acknowledge the hard work that our administration team does to fulfill this work, and the Budget Subcommittee as well, to try and maneuver and keep track of all the moving pieces, which I personally, and to the extent that it's not our profession and jobs, this board does not understand as intimately as you all do, when you are looking at what our options are when we're in this type of situation. So it is with all respect that these questions, for that, that my questions follow. Because our other role, besides being responsible to understand these things, big picture, is to hear what the concerns of our community are. And we've gotten lots of great letters and outreach, as Superintendent Luff highlighted, and then folks that came tonight, who spoke to the value of the Latin program that it plays, and also the value in a student's future that, that this program can offer. And so I'll go through a couple of things that stood out to me. One, I know that our strategic plan and our academic goals certainly, you know, are not to have just two languages offered, probably, right? Again, we wouldn't be looking at this unless there was data and numbers and enrollment issues that would say, like, of the things that we, you know, of a terrible decision, this is, this is, this, this would be an option, just, you know, potentially because of enrollment numbers. Obviously, you know, we're hearing about why the value goes so far beyond even just the classroom. So trying to, or loop back in here. I guess what I then would carefully ask is, also with the process, what we've seen is that some numbers have moved. And you guys have worked hard to meet, like, work collaboratively and meet these, these, these numbers that have been asked, so that we aren't functioning at a fiscal cliff next year and setting ourselves up for even a worse situation. But still, things have seemed a little bit fluid, or we have, and I don't mean this in a way that, like, means that anybody's hiding anything, but things, we have found things here and there, or things have revealed themselves, maybe just through the, the actual work of doing it. And so through the budget process and the steps that remain, I hear what Superintendent Luff is saying, in that we kind of need to make this decision about Latin, because kids are registering now for their languages, and we don't want to delay. That can probably have a pretty dominant, negative domino effect for Dr. Gallagher and the high school. But I just wonder if you guys could discuss with me the potentiality of, like, voting on something permanently now for particularly Latin, and then something were to reveal itself that would be a substitute that could help it remain? What would the, what recourse would we have to make a change in that case? Is that naive thinking? Or what, I'm just, I'm curious what your thoughts are on that.
So I, I have to be frank, that in the conversations that we've had, that regardless of the budget climate, that this might, this would be probably likely one of the programs we would continue to revisit because of the low enrollment. I think that it's unfortunate, and I, and I want to, I want to also say, just because I, while we're on the topic, that I don't, I don't take this conversation lightly. I've shared with the committee members, but my own daughter was four years of Latin at Norwood High, and, you know, had Ms. Holmes, and was in the Latin club, and did national Latin exam, and was supposed to go to Italy in 2020. So she was a four-year Latin student pre-COVID, so when the enrollment was just as bad, when there were two to three levels in a single class. So, and I, and I do also want to say, while we're talking about it, I heard a lot of, you know, students speak very wonderfully about their teacher tonight, awesome, I'd love to hear it. And this, I want to make sure that everyone understands, this is not an indictment on the educator. It's not.
Right.
Like, this, you know, Ms. Holmes has done a remarkable job with teaching two to three levels in a classroom at one time. But kind of right there is the catch-22. Like, she's 100% right in her, you know, when she spoke this evening about, you know, a normal Latin program would have more than one educator, and it would be, you know, multiple levels, and they'd be, you know, dividing it up and all the preps. That's kind of the point, that she should not have to be doing that, and it has been going on for well before COVID.
And yet, they're making it work, and to the extent that it's sort of a jewel in Norwood's programming, what, what could this lead to larger discussions about? And again, all respect, I'm out of my lane, I completely understand that. But, you know, I've had my friends with incoming freshmen or freshmen, my kids are younger, that have said to me, why are there, and God, please don't crucify me, but why are there 452 music classes that my kids can take, or are required to take in, or whatever?
You can't say that at Norwood.
No, I apologize, I know, it's a sacred cow, and I'm a carpetbagger, and I'm, and I'm an arts proponent, for God's sake. But my point is, it's, it's imbalanced, and so it, it opens a thing, and this isn't our purview. Is that what you're going to say?
No, I'm going to hop on your bandwagon.
Okay. And so, and so, you know, or, and, and language is, and, and then we look at colleges and what they're looking for in terms of languages, and it's just, you know, it's, maybe we need to have a bigger discussion here. And with Superintendent Luff and his new tenure, maybe this is a good time to do it. So I'm trying to get to a vote where I understand, on one hand, it's a very practical thing, and we have been asked to do this, and even I know that the people that have reached out understand that. But how do we make that practical, practical decision, but maybe leave an opening for what so far has seemed to, seems, have, seems to have been a productive and iterative process that has evolved? Go ahead, Joan, sorry.
Can I just make one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, school committee's not voting the budget tonight. We're just asking to vote the tier one.
But that includes the Latin.
That includes Latin.
But it's not the final vote.
No, no, but I, but I think in order for, sorry.
Because we haven't, because we're still having public comment and a final vote later in March.
Yes, and so we, we probably, if the majority of the committee thinks that they want to reconsider the vote we took last Tuesday, I would say we should have that discussion and vote now. It can always change again at the budget hearing, but if, if the majority is feeling that we're, first of all, one of us who voted in favor on a Tuesday has to put motion for reconsideration. And then if we have the discussion for reconsideration, and the committee is going to say, let's keep protector and stay Latin, that is more than $100,000 that we're then going to have to discuss where else in the budget is reduced.
Well, I just, yeah, and I just wanted to mention the process. So before the public hearing, you know, my office has to produce a budget book or a budget that the public can see next Friday. So we have to have a budget, it's not the final budget, but we need some, I need something to be able to produce.
So to translate that to, there's a possibility, but, like, right now, we're at the point in the budget process where we have to make a decision to move forward in the budget process.
So he, so you decide what goes in the book?
Hold on, I just want to get, Joan's been waiting very patiently.
So not last meeting, but two meetings before, we identified that there was tremendous inequity in our fees. And I'm curious as to if the analysis has been done, if we bring our fees in line, and how much money that would save us, because that's currently listed as tier three fee increases, and I'm not sure why that's the case, given that we have uncovered that there's inequity among our fees.
I think you motioned you didn't want to touch it.
I didn't want to touch it.
I changed my mind.
We did, we did, we did also have a discussion, because I did ask that, I did, I did ask that question specifically in budget sub, like, what that could bring us up, and it won't, it wouldn't touch, like, an entire position. Or, you know, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't save a position with the, with an increase. I mean, we'd have to massively increase fees.
Well, we have, okay, but I'm, I'm still, again, I'm coming back to the idea that what I'm looking at here in tier one and tier two is all core responsibilities of our department that we're reducing. And we have one set of extracurriculars that we charge according to one standard, and another set of extracurriculars that we charge according to a value.
We are, I think, we, we still are committed to looking into those things and making adjustments as, but I don't think it's, even if we.
It's going to be done in three months.
Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't get it done for this budget cycle, and if we, and if we do adjust them, it's certainly not going to make a meaningful dent in that nearly $100,000.
But that is why we, we tried to get direction back in January on the fees.
Well, the fee, the fees were, we thought what we heard was that we didn't really want to visit fees. I think the savings was about 80,000, and it was mostly from the transportation fee. So if the committee decides to revisit that, we could revisit it. I think we still need some budget to go forward with tonight, so that we can prepare something for the public, for the public hearing. But I don't know, do you have, you have an opportunity to still, after the budget hearing, to make recommendations before the final vote?
Right, but we don't, so we don't meet again unless we have more meetings, until the budget hearing. So wherever we land tonight is what goes to FinCom next week, and is the budget book available next Friday. And then that is what people would come to us on the 19th to share their thoughts on everything in the budget. And then after the budget hearing, the 19th, we can continue to change it. We have one more week to do so.
Yeah, Sean's point is, even if it's gone to FinCom, and the, the point of the hearing is that we could adjust it afterward, you're saying?
Yeah, I think this budget is balanced. It's what BBC is asking us to, to come to, that number of 6.7%. I don't think that's changing.
Where, I think what Kate and I are currently saying is, these items are not under BBC's control, they're under the school committee's.
They're under, yeah. But the bottom line number is, and we are at a bottom line number, and this is how we got there.
And, and I, and I just heard that if we shift transportation fees, that saves us about $80,000. And the fees that I did specifically ask for us to look into was, why do we charge athletes per season, but not fine arts?
And that is not transportation fees, and that won't cover 80,000.
Do we have a sense of how much that will cover?
I mean, one, give me one second.
If we, if, I'm sorry, to clarify, if we switch from per year to per.
To, yeah, if, if we have fine arts, mirror athletics.
Yeah, Joan, that is such a complicated, we, we started that with Karen, and then it got paused, and then when Matt was here, he felt it was so big, he didn't have time. And if, if that direction was given to us in January, but there is absolutely no way we can do that.
Even in January, because it is such a, because there, there are so many more complexities with, like. You're next. But because, it is, I mean, having lived it, again, you want to talk, I'm like, no, I'm like, no, 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 no.
I'm curious, I mean, you register for summer musical, you register for fall, you register for spring musical, it seems identical to me for.
But it's not, like, so, for example, because I've, again, I've lived it, there's, you're doing the summer musical, they're doing the, the spring musical, and you're doing honor orchestra, and you're doing, you know, jazz choir, like, so there's, you know, do you just pay one fee, or do you have to pay per three, and you're doing all?
Because I'm an athlete, and I'm paying for soccer, and then I'm paying for winter.
I'm talking about all doing them at, at the same time in the spring, because on Mondays you do jazz, on Tuesdays you do, so that's what I'm suggesting. It's, it's more complicated than just one season's fee.
I think it's more complicated, because it's, I think we just don't want to touch it politically.
No, I, I actually, I, I don't think that at all, and I'm, I'm willing to say that as, as a parent of, like, a, you know, music students, as going through, you know, former matrícula, like, I, I absolutely.
I don't want to increase fees anywhere. Yeah, I'm sorry, I had to wait.
I don't, I don't believe that we shouldn't touch it. I think that it has been a really weird, I always thought it was weird to pay $150 for the year, but we also talked about, like, a lot of those music students are also doing athletics, and then we have to come up with a formula for, per family cap, so that includes music and athletic. It was just more complicated than being able to do it in, like, a couple of months.
I, I just, as we're talking. I think, I, I just, as we're talking about cutting core academic functions, I'm wondering why we're not looking at cutting extracurriculars instead. I guess that's the philosophical bent I'm coming from. I'm done. Sorry.
I would say, so we did on the February meeting, look at fee increases. The biggest fee increase that we proposed, proposed as a possibility would be the transportation fee, because transportation's going up a lot next year with the new contract. We would take the fee up by about $75 and that would net about $58,000. The rest of the fee increases that we had were minor, like $10 on athletics. To do a deep dive, like, to really investigate the fees, I think we need a full year to like, start in the beginning of the year and do a full fee analysis. I don't think we have time for the budget to do anything more than this. But if the committee wanted to look at th, these particular increases, the most of which would be transportation.
Transportation is a core function. You gotta get kids to and from school. That's not an extra.
And that's why we didn't wanna touch it.
Yeah, that's why we didn't touch transportation.
Except for the kindergarten ones. They're not for each one.
I think I'm next.
No, that would be.
Do we keep saying?
David.
Sorry, David.
Thank you.
Sorry, David.
So I think this conversation is good. And I think that we do this quite a bit as a committee, where we have these conversations when it's in, like, when it's budget cycle time. So my suggestion would be this, it's not that it's a bad conversation, but I think at this point, we gotta move on a little bit. So I would say, take the notes. It's a good conversation and let's revisit it once we get through this budget cycle. I wanted to comment on the vote that we have to take. I am gonna motion to approve it. I hear what you guys are saying. And I think, I, I say this all of the time and it's in, it was my role as a teacher, my role currently as an administrator, my role as a school committee member, where it's all well and good. And at the end of the day, public schools are a resource that is finite and we have to make hard decisions. And it's the worst part about the job at every single one of those levels. And I will say, knowing that and knowing to reiterate what you had said, just that this is not about the teacher. This is about, right, the program. I think that we have had the professionals, the administrators who are there and, and responsible for everything, be really thoughtful about how they do this and approached it in a way, although there is always going to be collateral damage, the minimal amount of collateral damage. So I, I do wanna reiterate that. I do wanna make a motion to approve under that thing, the, do we have to vote? Yes, that?
Yeah.
That budget. So my motion on the table would be to approve it.
You have to be more specific for Donna.
Yes, you are correct. And I'm gonna now reopen this.
It might be in the memo. Did, did, did Tim give us the language in the memos?
I think he did.
Yes.
I found a million different pieces of data over here.
So the action that I am requesting is vote to approve the current tier-one reductions as described in this memo as a component of the FY26 budget process.
Would you adjust for the minutes, David, total, that amount? I think it's up there on the spreadsheet.
You can, uh, four hun, uh?
Eighty or something?
Eight hundred eighty-three thousand, $697.
Let us have a friendly amendment, which is the form of an asterisk, which is kinda what I was getting at, which is a revisit, not through a revote of, like, getting at a revisit without having to take up that old vote, but to say that unless the administration finds something else, then that's not, I don't know how I should technically term that for the motion, but to vote this forward unless something else comes up, which I understand is.
You'd like to prioritize any found savings to be used for the Latin program?
Yeah, that's a great way to vote. Thank you, Joan. That's very eloquent.
Can you say that again, Joan?
Uh.
Prioritize any found savings.
Prioritize found savings for the Latin program is Kate's amendment.
It's Kate's amendment.
Do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second for discussion. Okay. Seconded by Teresa. All right, it's further discussion. So just data in context, school committee is only as good as the data it's given by its administration. And our current administration centrally and at the high school have given us amazing data and a lot of hard work and a lot of transparency. Fortunately, that is not what we always got in the past from previous central administration, not the high school. The high school's always been transparent. This issue should have been elevated to the school committee level last year and the year before. And it was not. Didn't mean it didn't exist. It just was not elevated in the budget process when it should have. That is just a fact. No emotion, just based on numbers, just what I know about how the buildings and the directors put together their budget, what was given to our previous superintendent and what our previous superintendent decided to share or not share. Just facts. I don't wanna cut anything. I never do. And student voice and choice is so important to me, always has been at every level. And first joined the school committee when my kids were in kindergarten and fourth grade. They are now eighth grade and 12th grade. And as a parent, on pivotal transitions with both my kids and on the verge of tears nearly daily because of those transitions, I have both profound respect and appreciation for what have gotten my children to where they are now. And also an understanding of what comes next, especially for my senior, as I've been touring colleges. It's a whole new world out there. And really, at a secondary level, whether it's a career, whether it's a trade, whether it is college, there are so many options and so many pathways. And I wish we could support every single choice for every single student. Public education is not set up that way. The, the funding doesn't allow it. And I, I hate it and I will advocate. And again, we're gonna talk about legislative advocacy later. I spent over an hour on Monday with Representative Rogers and Senator Rush trying to get more money. I know the high school, everybody at the high school, teachers, department chairs, Mr. Dureen, Dr. Galligan, they have come before us consistently asking for our support budgetary and policy-wise to enhance the pathways, to protect fine arts, to protect activities, to protect world language, the sciences, so many things. And if you look at our program of study, there are so many options in there. And just as a parent, in my like middle, little Mary Poppins bag that I always carry with me, I, I just have the small one of electives that I'm still trying to figure out with my eighth grader. What is his plan for ninth grade? Because he's not very easy to get that information from and tell me what he wants to do in ninth grade. I, I, I firmly believe in choice and I don't wanna take any of it away. I was able to take three languages in high school and college, Latin being one of them. And I am so blown away by the student advocacy tonight. And one of the students is still in the room who I noted a lot of community outreach and advocacy. And Mr. Kai, you should be commended for that. And the number of students, very young students, ninth graders who spoke to us tonight, I mean, they are the epitome of the word valor, which comes from Latin, which means strength, which over time has evolved into bravery and courage. And I, and as a school committee hearing from our students, to me, is the most important thing, which is why I've advocated so long and hard and continue to be involved with our SAC, our Student Advisory Council, and why we all should, you know, go to Student Government Day. And I don't want, no matter what the committee decides, I, I don't want our students, our parents, our staff to feel that your efforts have gone unnoticed because they, they are amazing. I noticed in the room, we had a number of other world language teachers here to show their support. I think I counted three Spanish teachers and a French teacher, just as I looked around. It's terribly ironic that this is National World Language Week. Wish somebody would've told me that before tonight. I have been a very strong advocate of world language. You've all heard me say this about the Copley, like I have been consistently fighting that we figure out how to get world language into grade five. And it is not lost on me, the irony, that part of getting in grade five world language is inadvertently now in the same sphere of reducing a world language opportunity at the high school. But I don't know what other options there are, because the tier-two reduces an English or science teacher at the high school. And if I take any emotion out of it and I just look at data, was it two meetings ago when we did the enrollment cost center? And we had very detailed data from Dr. Galligan and Mrs. Dureen. And the numbers of students in different ELA and different science, which we do require four years of English and three years of science. But those teachers are also teaching electives. If I'm strictly looking at it from numbers, I think it impacts a higher number of students and more choice and more voice. Kate and Joan, I hear your question and, and the optimism that will be savings found. Unfortunately, I think it's the opposite direction. I think that due to federal decisions that are coming, we will be looking at needing to reduce an additional $400,000 from our budget before the end of the year. I hope I am wrong, but I think that's where we're headed. That is all of tier-two and then potentially also increasing fees.
Joan?
Don't blame me. I am gonna vote against this, against this, the motion. And I'm just giving you all fair warning. I've, through this conversation, I found another hill to die on, which is going to be, I'm never gonna vote to reduce an academic thing when we haven't cut extracurriculars. So if you watch school committee, you know there are particular hills. JJ's well aware, some of them, that I will die on. And so, you know, I kind of have fair warning that, that I, I'm gonna want to see where we can reduce or increase revenue in extracurriculars before we do any cuts to academic programs. And that is not a reflection on the recommendation from, from you, JJ, or from Tim, or from Sean. But just through this conversation, I found a philosophical hill that I'm gonna stick on as we continue down this joyous, unforeseen adventure that we're all on.
All right. So there is a motion on the table to approve the tier-one reductions to the tune of $883,000. And I lost it. So we already had $883,697. The friendly amendment was accepted, that if there happened to be any savings found, that the first place that we would place back would be the Latin program. It was seconded by Teresa. Any other discussion before we vote?
A second for discussion. Please make sure.
It's a second regardless?
No, it's not. It's actually not. It's not.
I will second it so we can vote.
No, we can vote. But I'm saying, I want it in the minutes. And I second for the point of discussion.
Okay. Anything else?
A question, Dr. Munoz, Dr. Galligan. If the Latin FTE goes away, there is a commitment for the students who need the second year for their graduation requirement to offer that online, which I know is not equal to being in person. I do know ediscere does allow discussion and peer engagement. Again, not the same as in person, but I, I believe ediscere allows some innovative ways. If we were to do that for a year, because I think this is a, a much bigger topic. And, and JJ, you know, I've said to you many times, why are we waiting to FY28 to look at world language? And I talk to Dr. Wyeth before that every year. Why do we keep pushing down our assessment of our world language curriculum and offerings? And I think the time is now. I think the time was 2017 when I first started to bring it up. Because I, I, there's a commitment, but there's not a district-wide commitment. It's not embedded in our strategic plan. It's, it's never been a voted-on value of the school committee. Not that it isn't, but we've never voted on it. And world language is so important to our students. I wonder if we need to take a deeper dive from a curriculum perspective. And if we maintain Latin in some sense next year, but spend some time looking at, can it come back? And can it come back also with the offerings at the Copley? I'm just trying to think out loud. I, I also think there's things that we heard tonight and in emails that we really, we really need to reconcile with, because I did hear aloud and cloud, loud and clear, that students felt that this gave them opportunities that they didn't have elsewhere and we shouldn't ignore that. And I also read in many emails, I think we got 30 emails, many students said that Latin prepared them better for reading and writing than English. We need to look at our English curriculum, like ASAP, starting in kindergarten, if that is how our students feel.
All right. Any other discussion or questions?
So the motion includes the amendment?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Neat.
So that passes three to two.
Can I ask clarification, since the majority of you are saying yes? So with potential savings, it's the will of the committee that Latin is reinstated first? That's what that amendment meant?
Yes.
The friendly amendment was that it gave priority to.
Priority to.
If, if the ability.
Any savings that are found are prioritized for Latin. So that still gives the committee discretion, but Latin has to be considered and explained why. It would not be that. That's how I understood the motion Kate made.
Just for the record, it's the amendment. I'm against.
Why are you saying it now? I'm sorry.
No, because I wanna document it. I'm allowed to say what I want in the minute.
No, 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 but I was just so confused. Because based on the discussion, I thought you would've been in support of the amendment.
No, it's why I wanna document. I, I am support of discussion.
But.
Kate's wondering why you didn't bring up.
Why you don't support the amendment?
Just the amendment and we could've discussed that piece. That was.
I, I'm confused.
I feel like I did in my whole, there's not going to be savings.
So your vote?
So then it's a moot point.
Was just, okay. Okay.
Yeah. No, 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 I, I understand what, I understand what you're saying.
So you're voting against it, but.
I think unfortunately you need to be.
We don't have another choice, is what you're saying.
I think unfortunately it needs to be.
So you get to vote no, but.
No, I'm voting against the, the motion with the amendment. I, I think it needs to be eliminated. I do not agree with the amendment that if there should turn up savings, that this is the first thing to be reinstated, because what we have not really even talked about broadly is what's happening at the elementary level.
But, but the understanding, and I hear that, is just, to be clear, as Joan had said, that there's still discretion, but priority would be given to that.
Yeah, I was just clarifying as a subcommittee.
Perfect.
What you're asking me to do, even if I disagree with it.
And at this point, you're projecting what's gonna happen and we're voting on what's been put in front of us.
Say that again.
You're projecting what's gonna happen, right? That we're gonna have to cut another $400,000, but that's not before the committee. What, what is before the committee is these tier-one reductions.
Right. It's like one step at a time.
Well, I, I also think, let's just not get ahead of ourselves. Like, we're, when we're talking about priority will be given, like, we have a finite amount of time to do that anyway. Like, we have basically two weeks for that to happen. So, I mean, I, I certainly, my understanding of the amendment wasn't that this is in perpetuity. Like, that by the time the budget is, you know, finalized and the end of March, like, that's the time. And if that doesn't happen by then, unfortunately, with the enrollments, the way they are and the, and the world language choices, we, we can't continue past that. We can't, like, that, that's my understanding. But I, so that, that if in the next.
If we move to a tier-two, the conversation has to change.
It's completely, yeah. So that was, so, so just so you know that, that, I mean, that's why my, so maybe we should've clarified that beforehand.
No, it's okay.
I thought it was clear. Sorry.
JJ, can you go back to the, the memo quick, though?
I don't wanna move to tier-two, so.
No, I know that, Joan. But there's something that we should probably understand before Sean gets into the warrant articles. Oh, no, I'm sorry. This one's memo. Yeah, the one that, yeah, if you scroll down or scroll up, or where are we? Scroll up. One second. Where is the Medicaid positions listed?
It's the next paragraph.
Right before tier-two, it just talks about it.
Oh, yeah.
Right there.
The paragraph.
No, not that. Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We continue to seek the warrant article from the town to provide funds to jumpstart up to three positions.
Okay.
If the town doesn't approve this article or federal government reduces Medicaid, we may need to make, you know, some tier-twos. But then he goes on to say that, you know, we can, we have time to do that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, there's some spreadsheet somewhere that has it bulleted out, but okay.
That was in our budget.
And, yeah, it's, there's too many meetings.
I think I know where you're getting at.
Well, to your point, Joan, of what we have and what is coming, there's, there's a lot we have in Budget Subcommittee. So if the federal government was not what it is right now, and we were talking about Medicaid, it has been a goal of this school committee for about four years to get our full Medicaid reimbursement directly to the school district. And that is what the warrant article that we're about to talk about ties into. And, and being able to plan and build out that about $200, $350,000 a year comes from our Medicaid reimbursement and can get BCBA's, OT's, speech-language pathologists into our budget. A very real possibility of where we will get hit with funding is if mass health, which is Medicaid, the federal government decreases Medicaid, then mass health goes away. And then this will not be possible. And then this will not be possible. And I fear that in the next two school committee meetings, that is going to lead to the next discussion of we actually now need to reduce to 80,000 to 400,000 out of the operating budget because our hope and plan of having Medicaid reimbursement goes away.
Right, just so people understand, like, those positions are already in our budget. We were suggesting moving them to the warrant article to jumpstart, and then they would be fully funded by Medicaid funding. Just so the public understands what we're talking about. These are positions that already exist.
In the current.
In the current budget, in the current, in our year now, where as we sit, and we were moving them to this Medicaid-funded mechanism to get them out of the budget and have them be self-sufficient with the Medicaid funds.
Because they're services that we direct bill for.
Correct.
We directly provide, and we, and the school committee, not the school committee, and the school business office directly bills for it, that's why. Yes, however, and I do wish Mr. Luff was here. That is congressionally appropriated, correct? That money?
Yeah, but Congress is in support of reducing.
Congress may be in support of reducing, but today the Supreme Court just recently blocked previous executive orders, so I, I cannot, I will not continue to make this budget when they're so, like, I, I'm going to have to be optimistic.
This is the one area that Mr. Luff wants us to think about.
Yes, but I will say.
But again, there's too many ifs in there.
No, you're right. We move forward with what we have in front of us right now. We can't do anything, but we have to keep this in the back of our minds.
And just, just a reminder that the Tenth Amendment gives rights to the states and that we had healthcare before the national system, so even if the national system leaves, we would still have healthcare.
With a Republican governor, Mitt Romney.
Funded with some Medicaid funds as well.
Concerned because it's 9:25 and we still have a long agenda, so.
And I warned you all of my hill when we get there, so.
Oh, boy. All right, so let's move on to the warrant articles, please, Mr. Mannion.
Thank you. So, Dr. Munoz, can you pull up the memo? So you have a memo here with four, a memo and a vote to take four warrant articles to the Springtown meeting. The first one is about the Special Education Reserve. So this reserve can be funded up to 2% of total net school spending. When we look in the FY '24 end-of-year report, the net school spending is 79 million. So it's actually higher than the budget because it pulls, the spending includes, like, shared costs. It includes, you know, net school spending includes every dollar spent on education. 2% of that, and I've been going back and forth on this number because there's a required net school spending and there's an actual net school spending, but when I use the actual net school spending, the 2% of that is 1.1 million, 580,959. That's the maximum we can get at. And I also looked at prior memos from Ms. Sheridan. This number is consistent with her numbers. So the balance right now is 700,000. We're hoping that we don't need to use any of that this year, so we would be requesting the town to add 880,000 to fully fund that reserve account. Okay?
Do we want to talk about all of them all at once, or do you guys want to just take one at a time?
So the second one is the mass health Medicaid funding. So we're asking for the town to appropriate $300,000 from free cash into a special appropriation for mass health Medicaid expenditures to fund up to three medically-related service providers. This funding would be town-funded seed money that would serve as a bridge while we can try to get revenues up. That being said, this would get us through one year. Our budget's dependent on at least two of these positions being funded by this warrant. Like we mentioned in the last article, if this warrant doesn't go through, we need to add these positions back into our operating budget, so. If it's funded for a year and the Medicaid revenue goes out, then it's just a discussion we're going to need to have in the year after that about the following year's budget. But this is the, this is the concept of asking for some funds to help us start to claim more and build up some more revenue here. The third is an MOU that, the town needs to vote this MOU once. It allows us to do ESA foster care transportation reimbursement. I will say it's not a huge reimbursement. We would be looking at an estimated reimbursement for last year of $2,800. It's due, I have to send some documentation in by this Friday, but we do need this MOU. Once the town approves this MOU forever in the future, we can get it. It's not a lot of money, but we talked about it at Budget Sub, and we feel like we should do everything we can to bring in every dollar we can. And the last one is, just because this is very, we talked this out in Budget Sub, and I've talked it out with our counterparts at the town, we believe it's a good time to ask for approval to, in the future, seek contracts that go over three years on both the transportation and the food service management. We're doing both those contracts this year. We're going to have to do three-year contracts, but in the future, we would like to be able to do four- or five-year contracts. Motion to approve.
That's what I was doing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion about the warrants before we vote?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think these are good.
For your work on those.
Just one minor item, the MOU for the foster care, that's like a state-generated MOU, right? Like, we don't have.
Yeah, and I attached it.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah. And that's the MOU.
Okay.
Sweet.
Yep. Any other discussion?
So total money in this that we would be asking at town meeting out of free cash is what?
Total money would be 880,000 plus the 300,000, so that would be 1.180959, is that right?
And then also the 2,800, right?
That, that's a reimbursement. We just need to have the MOU re.
Yeah, we're not asking for that money.
If the MOU is signed, it allows us to get reimbursed.
Who gets the reimbursement?
Right. The town will get the 2,800.
Yeah, but we're not asking for that in this warrant right now. This is just the MOU.
We're not asking for the funds out of free cash.
We're not asking for that.
No, that just allows us to get those funds. We can't, we can't get that reimbursement.
We could do that in a future warrant or through some other transfer mechanism.
We, we, we don't get that reimbursement at all if we can't get the MOU signed.
Okay, I thought we were asking for both, both the MOU and the reimbursement. No?
No, we're just, we just need the MOU to be signed, and then we'll, we should receive the reimbursement from the state.
But is it with McKinney-Vento?
It's foster care. It's part of ESA.
Because McKinney-Vento goes to the town.
That's separate. This is, this is.
I guess I'm just trying to understand, am I going to have to fight for this at BBC? Or does it come directly to you?
Probably going to be like McKinney-Vento.
So could we both ask to set it up and get the funding at the same time?
I don't know. It probably won't be received until, I think we have to cross that.
Okay.
Till.
I know it's a small amount of money.
Yeah.
No, no, this is something we dealt with with Matt Wells as well. We had a whole bunch of those with the, the, the. Hotels, what am I thinking of?
The.
Transition, yes, thank you, the transitionary, like, transportation and things like that. We had to do similar, so it's, yeah, it's a good question. It's a good thing to bring up.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, the vote, the motion on the table is to approve all, and it was made by David, seconded by Joan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that passes five to zero. Thank you for that. All right, let's move right along. Dr. Munoz, you're going to give a Student Opportunity Act update?
Sure. All right, so we're here to talk about the Student Opportunity, the SOA is what we called it. Obviously, we went through the whole process last year, and so just a quick update on some of the key goals that we had in our plan that we wrote for DESI. One is chronic absenteeism reduction. We definitely want to reduce chronic absenteeism. And out of our three targeted subgroups that we picked, picked in this plan, our multilingual learners, loan from students, and Latino students, we have seen a decrease in chronic absenteeism. So we got the numbers from DESI over the summer, or from our Aspen, from our Sims. And we are, all three subgroups have a gradual decrease in chronic absenteeism, which is something to celebrate. And right now, we're on trend, but it's obviously the middle of the year, so we're on trend. If the numbers, if the kids continually come in the pattern they're coming in right now in our district, we will be even lower for chronic absenteeism this year. Family liaison support, we hired six family liaisons in our district, and so they are actively collaborating with school leaders. And in fact, the majority of them will be at the World Language Fair tomorrow because they are attending evening events and getting to know families. They're also doing a wonderful job of recruiting members for the LPAC. And that event's happening, or that LPAC meeting's happening at the end of the month. They are going to have a big event to meet those folks. And our district liaisons are represented throughout the various schools, and we have prioritized each of them in two to three schools. Each of that way, a principal has two to three of them, knowing they still have access to all six of them, but we got two or three assigned to each school so they can give more support with chronic absenteeism, family events, after-school events, any of those areas that they need help in. Professional learning. This past summer, we held a workshop for multilingual learners for cooperative learning. It was just focused on multilingual learner strategies. That happened in August. We had about 32, 35 educators attend, some being ELE teachers, some being general education teachers. Very well received, the reviews were really, went over really well. And also aligned with our district-wide PD of our cooperative learning structure for this year, which happened in August and in November. So we're going to continue to focus on that. We will do days three and four next year. So then the whole district will have a full training regimen of cooperative learning. In collaboration with that, we are gearing our coaches, which means our district leaders, our school leaders, and teacher leaders from each school through a coaching program so we can be self-sustaining, so we don't got to go to outside vendors. And we can coach our teachers, and they're, they're going to finish their training by the end of the school year. And then next year, they'll be able to have a coaching schedule where teachers will be coached implementing these cooperative learning structures that they have learned over the past two years. Last is, we used to have adult English classes just for families at the vault. We have expanded that district-wide, and we actually had huge interest. So that's starting this month. And so we are having, even though it's still going to be held at the vault, we have families from all over the district that can, that can sign up. And so we actually went from, I think, like, 15 to 20 people to like six, over 60 to 70 people were interested.
Wow.
And so we want to, all of our family liaisons are going to go to those classes and help support so we can get the continued interest.
Yeah.
And we're shifting to a conversational English class versus, I think, the class that may have pivoted, but our, our two, two teachers from the vault who currently teach the class do a wonderful job. And so we may have to get some more teachers to teach, but we have grant funding to help support that. And so last is our family engagement and feedback. So I think I'm going to send out another Parent Square this week because Superintendent Luff did put it in his letter for our family survey last week. I'm not sure where it was at in his letter, but we've only had a handful of responses in four or five days, and I know that we can get a lot more, so we'll probably send that out because we want to leave it open for two weeks to have our families speak on climate and culture and how they feel about their schools, and so.
You had to click, like, continue?
Okay, so see, that's, that's.
And then when, if you did it on a phone, at least on my phone, it glitched. So then I went into Parent Square and did it on my computer, like, to read the whole new.
I'm going to, I'm going to make it as its own Parent Square post versus nothing else is going to be on it but the survey. I plan on doing that this week. I'm just going to make sure that Superintendent Luff is okay with that, which I think he will be. Because then, once we get the families rolling in, that way schools can see their updates on how families feel supported by their schools and what areas we need to improve and where we can celebrate.
Yeah.
And then we'll get that same survey out at the end of the year. So even though it's not, we gave out the survey probably a little later than we wanted to. We probably wanted to give it out late January. We still want to give it twice a year, mid-year, end of the year, so schools have a chance to improve their practices for families and supports. And then lastly, there's a, that's a slide deck for the budget update just to see where the funds that we allocated in our plan last year and where they kind of landed. And so we haven't changed any projections for year two and year three yet, but we've been pulling from a variety of different funding sources to make sure that we are staffing our SOA without having to ask for more money from the budget. And I'll take any questions.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Munoz?
Did we go through your budget slides before that are linked there?
I put them in the, on Friday, but I don't know, I don't think we didn't go through them.
Well, in a, in a meeting, we haven't seen them before, right?
No, I put them Friday. I know you guys had Budget Subcommittee, but I don't think you guys talked about them.
Could we just quickly take a look at it?
Yeah. So these are just the goals that we just talked about, and we just give you an update on all those goals. But here is the, last year, we had wrote into the SOA that we were going to spend 112,000. We actually, our plan is spending around 85,000 this year. We have some cost savings that the family liaisons didn't cost as much as we anticipated. So even though we've only spent 2,100 up to this point, we still got, still money budgeted in there without going over the 85,000. Professional development came in at where we said we were going to come in, adult English classes. We have a little bit more budget now that we have higher interests, but right now, we're anticipating to spend around maybe $3,000 to $4,000. And then year two and year three is what we have written there. We haven't modified that budget yet, but we will be sending an update to DESI by April because they ask for an update every year on the Student Opportunity.
Wonderful. Any questions?
Discussion. So don't you have one more slide?
It's just the ones that we had written last year.
Yeah.
That's our, that's our original budget right here.
Yep.
Let me see, this is where, that's what we had costed out last year, and then it ended up being what the actual number that I shared with you, because that would have been 112,000 if you had all that up, I believe. But it's no longer that. I think it's the revised budget that you can see.
Yeah.
How I actually paid with, with some of these funding sources.
So with SIR gone for next year, how are we funding that?
I have already written into some other title grants.
Title grants.
So SIR allowed me to save some of my title grant money this year and push it to next year. So I was still able to reduce my academic general fund budget, which is what you guys saw in the, in the Tier One savings. Knowing that SIR helped me save this year, because the title funds always run two-year spans. So that's how I've been able to save. And then what we're bringing to you guys later on this month, the 311 grant. We finally got approval for it, so that money has to be recorded eventually because they weren't, we just haven't got the award letter. And so we'll give you guys that, that grant information at the end of this month, on the 26th, or if this budget hearing, we can do it another time, but it'll be sometime in the next one or two meetings.
Okay.
Bless you.
Excuse me. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let us move to the next item on the agenda, which is an update on the Student Services Audit.
Thank you. So this is just a very brief update on the work of academic discoveries in the Student Services Audit. They are well in, in the process of conducting the review. They're doing so many different things. We received an email from Dr. Ekstrom last week, and I'll just read you a little bit, but it says, "We are currently at 47 pages on the interim report, so it is moving along nicely. However, in review of the folders, there are many documents that have been uploaded." That's from the district, "within the last two days, including this afternoon. With your permission, we would like to include the summaries of these documents into the interim report and extend this interim for one more week." So Superintendent Luff, we discussed this and granted them the extension. I should say that it's an incredibly busy time at the schools right now, so we're still mostly done with uploading documents to them, but they're also doing interviews and focus groups. And scheduling that is a huge task with everything else that's going on. So hopefully, they'll be able to get an interim report with one week delay, but we may, we may have to grant them a little bit even more time because now it's basically on our end, and Dr. Munoz knows it's quite an exercise just getting all the teachers together for these interviews and things.
That's been the challenge, is they want teachers from general education classrooms, special education classrooms, from multilingual learner classrooms, which is all understandable. And then they want the administrators as well. But this is all interview scheduled during the day. And so it's, I, I kind of, I met with Ms. Munoz, and I said, "We need to prioritize teacher schedules because we sought teacher volunteers, and the teachers get the first pick of the times because if they want to do it, I want them to make sure they have the times without having the principals having to worry about coverage. And then administrators can worry about their own schedules after whatever times are left over." So I know interviews started today because I sent out a lot of teacher invites to make sure it was on their calendar.[1705.19] For my, at least the general education is what I was responsible for. Ms. Munoz did the special education teachers. Ms. Bluewater did the ELE teachers. And then we just sent all principals' times that we were hoping that they can make. And if they couldn't make it, they need to reach out to us, so.
So I think the work is all ongoing. I think they're well, you know, into the work. I think we just have to be a little bit flexible and some of it's on our end of just getting things scheduled at this point in time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manion?
We're still on target though, right, for a report in May?
So far, they haven't adjusted the timeline yet. So I think we're on target.
Okay.
But we should just be prepared to, you know, we'll, we'll regularly communicate with them about it and bring any updates if we need to.
Okay. Great. All right. So let's move on. The next item is legislative advocacy. Ms. Stewart?
Yeah. Um, there's one thing in your packet that Superintendent Love sent out. These are the legislative priorities from MASSS. But just to give you an update, so Jody Smith, the president of the union, teachers' union, and I met with Representative Rogers and Senator Rush on Monday. Spent a little over an hour with them, just sharing, you know, things internally about the districts, talking about our priorities, things we have talked about here before. Asking them what they are working on. Talked a lot about chapter seventy, both how it is allocated in Norwood. And then also asking them to look at the chapter seventy funding formula. As Mr. Manion pointed out through Masbo as well, this is a concern and this is the time that they should be reevaluating that formula. Because it still isn't fully adjusted for inflation. So Rush and Rogers said that they would continue to look into that. We talked to them about the special education reserve fund, as we were talking about earlier. Right now, we can have up to two percent net school spending in that fund. We are asking them, I think for the third year now, to support bills that would allow that to increase up to four percent. So if that passes, it doesn't cost anybody more money. We're not asking the state for more money. It just allows us and the town to save more money in that reserve fund. We talked about circuit breaker. So right now, circuit breaker is reimbursed up to seventy-five percent, both for special education services as well as special education transportation. We talked to them about supporting bills that would allow circuit breaker to be reimbursed up to ninety percent. Representative Rogers did say that the state is having a hard enough time staying at the seventy-five percent. We didn't feel that that would change, but that is something we could talk about today if we wanted to. We advocated for this last year to have an increase up to ninety percent reimbursement. We could try again. We did have a brief discussion with them of what are they aware at the state level and with Governor Healy, if anything, about what to do if federal funding does be reduced or go away. They, they agreed the biggest area that we should all be looking out for is that Medicaid, since it impacts mass health. But they were also clear that they don't have any answers right now. Everybody's having these same discussions at the same time. So Jody and I just asked that they continue to keep us informed. And if there is the opportunity to advocate, we would very much like to do so. I talked to them about, David, your favorite law, I say that with sarcasm, thirty-seven and three-fourths, right?
Thirty-seven H?
Thirty-seven H and three-fourths. And how that really has remained an unfunded mandate. And schools do need funding. We talked to this with Representative Rogers and Senator Rush last year. We do need funding to be able to do those things and provide restorative justice. I shared with them that schools really do need more funding for behavioral and mental health support. A year ago, Representative Rogers did get a grant for about fifty thousand dollars for mental health that went to the town. I asked him if he could get a grant that could go directly to the schools. I think we could put it to really good use. So he was going to look into that. We talked about the Student Opportunities Act. They were asking how things were going. JJ, I didn't yet have your presentation, but I told them after I got your presentation, I could send it along to them. Maybe they'll connect with you. But they were interested to know how that was going. Right now, we still just have the governor budget. Sean, when does the House budget come out? Is it the end of this month?
And you might be right.
Right. I think, I think it's the end of this month and then, but you know, we don't really know until July for sure what the numbers are going to be. They did encourage us to advocate at the federal level. Representative Rogers and Senator Rush work very closely with Senator, sorry, Representative Lynch. I have reached out to Representative Lynch and Senators Warren and Markey. I have not heard back. I can try again. But they did encourage us to keep advocacy at that level going. I shared with them that if you look at our DESI profile, right now, we are fifty-eight point three percent high needs in our district. We are twenty-four point three percent students with disabilities and we are forty-four, forty point four percent students of low income. So I just continued, you know, to tell them that our needs are increasing in our district. Jody and I invited them to come into our district. They want to. So Superintendent Love is going to schedule a time, hopefully for both of them and Governor Healy, to spend some time in Norwood in the spring. In the buildings with our staff, with our students. So that is a quick recap. Oh, the other area to talk to them about is related to chapter two twenty-two. So these, this is situations where students are involved in the court system and cannot currently safely be in school. But we still have a legal requirement to educate them. As you know from previous budget discussions, right now, students are out on chapter two twenty-two. That funding source is lumped into our budget under out of district, but it's not really out of district. And we can apply for circuit breaker for kids out of district, but we cannot apply for circuit breaker if kids are out for two twenty-two reasons. So I asked them if they could look at either existing laws or circuit breaker or come up with something new that would bring in some reimbursement for students in those situations as well. So they said that they would look into it. So that was the discussion.
Sorry, Jody, how many students a week does know what happens?
Yes. So currently at the high school, we have five. I don't know the Cogli number. Last year, we had seven at the high school. So that was the discussion. I'm happy to put together, you know, letters. I just didn't have time to do it before tonight. Nothing new that we haven't talked about before. I mean, even the letter that we sent last year at this time, we could probably copy paste a lot of it. But I don't know if there's other areas that you think we need to be focused on or that you do want me to put a letter together on for the next meeting?
I will say that I'm glad that you had that meeting with them because unfortunately, neither of them was at the legislative breakfast this past Friday. And several of the things you touched on were the priorities that you have in the memo that Tim put in there. So there was a present, so I'll jump on your bandwagon for legislative advocacy. I did attend the legislative breakfast this past Friday in Milford. I was, MASSS puts it on. Dr. Munoz was there, Mr. Manion was there, Mr. Love was there, and lots of representatives from, from our local surrounding towns. I was slightly disappointed to see that we did not have any of our representatives there, but they were kind of sporadic. I'm not sure who also had representatives missing. It is worth noting, they don't always have a representative there. Sometimes they send their legislative assistants to represent them, which is fine too. But there, you know, we just didn't have our representation. So I'm actually, the timing is wonderful that you had that meeting with them. Because quite a few of those priorities that you mentioned were priorities that MASSS is also putting forward into bills and just priority areas for the next year that are in that, that memo. So I personally think that you're up, everything you said is on the right track and I don't think there's anything additional that I would advocate for. You know, the fully funding circuit breaker transportation, well, out of district transportation is a big one for me. And then I think all the other things you're mentioning are right on track.
And you probably already, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's it. Nope.
You probably already were going to do this based on that memo from the breakfast. But if there's bills that are around those priorities, like somehow keeping them alerted or like, how can they keep it a little dashed?
Yeah, I haven't had time to sift through that quite. In the past, I linked it to the bills.
Yeah, like I wish they paid attention to it though. Like why?
I asked them, "Do you have any bill numbers for me?" But I will, I will go through the document.
Yeah, that was something kind of interesting too at the breakfast when somebody would, would stand up and say, "I've got a bill that I'm," and then someone would yellow. And what's that number? And there, you know, there's furious writing down, so it's.
And some of them aren't probably made yet. Like, what if we don't even know? Like, I just feel like they should be telling us sometimes.
Yeah. The other thing I did talk to them about, we have not talked about this before, but I think I'll have your support. The emergency order that allows us to meet hybrid.
Oh, oh, right.
Does go away.
It expires at, yeah, it sunsets at the end of the month.
So I don't, I don't know if all you know this history, but we were like the first school committee that jumped on our legislative representatives during COVID to say, "We still absolutely need a way to meet." And within a week and through a lot of advocacy, we got that emergency order at the time. And, and John Rogers was very helpful at the time in pushing that through. Now, we did, through our policy audit and through advocacy with the Board of Selectmen, get the Board of Selectmen to adopt a remote policy that we do have in our policy manual. It's B E D L. But if the state order as it exists right now goes away, that could change. I don't know if we will still have the ability to meet remotely for subcommittees. I don't think we have the ability to fully meet remotely because if that goes away, all that our town and our policy allows us to do is hybrid. But the quorum always has to be in person.
Yeah.
So I asked them to advocate for that, to stay. I, I think that has to be done this month or we lose that ability.
Yeah, there was, just as an aside, there was, if anyone follows the DESI, not DESI, sorry, the MASSE.
Oh, like the.
Bullets and things like that, the, the list serve. That was a big point of conversation this week. And one of the recommendations that someone at MASSE came back with was that what she had been told is that, yes, MASSE can advocate, but it's going to be a lot more impactful if we individually are reaching out to our representatives and to people that can help us get that not to go away. And just to describe how detrimental that would be to a lot of our boards who work. You know, there's, yeah, our, our subcommittees would, it would be very difficult to be meeting on subcommittees if we couldn't do it remotely. Or even just to have a quorum for a, a full meeting, you know, if we couldn't do, if we couldn't do hybrid. I, I don't think that, I don't know, hybrid would go away, but.
That it won't go, that it won't re-up?
I, I think right now it's getting, I think it's getting tacked on the other things rather than its own. I haven't followed it too closely. March twenty twenty-five seemed so far away when all of this first happened, but it will impact our subcommittee work. You know, for the most part, we have at least three of us in person, but there's been times that life has happened and we've been only two in the room and two remote or something. So it, it could potentially impact our business. It would also impact our ability to allow the public to join remotely for public comment. That would go away as well. So I, I think we do need individually write them. I mean, I, I talked to them about it on Monday, but individually, we should push that along.
Sky is falling. Anything else for legislative advocacy before we move forward?
No, just, just two other things from Tim that I, I didn't talk about with Rush and Rogers because it's more from like the Superintendents Association. But he did just share, they're trying to change the teacher retirement system. So right now, and JJ, you probably know, you can only work a certain percent, right, if you're retired. And this is trying to allow, if you're retired, that you can work more because there is a shortage in some areas of teachers.
Yeah, this was, this is in that memo. That's, this is one of the areas that MASSS is looking into. And it's, their rationale is to, that a lot of times when they look for specifically like the commissioner of DESI, they end up going, having to go outside of the system because nobody wants to leave MTRS. Because they put so many years into the, into the retirement that this would require them to then go into a different, a different pool and a different system, a different, it's a different percentages. It'd be like, it'd be like going from any, you know, like going from a teacher to a town employee. Like you just, you're doing, you're going to change, you're, you're going to change your, your, your group. So they want to change that so that they can actually get people who have been here and been educators in the state to want to stay and be the commissioner of the state. So hopefully they will be able, and that would, this, and I think, so I think that would allow somebody moving into that position to choose to stay in MTRS.
Yeah, that's what they want.
Yeah. So that, yeah, is in that one.
Okay.
All right. So we're going to move on to the next items. And we're going to start with our policy section with our policy subcommittee update. Or do you want to just roll it all into one discussion?
One discussion.
Fabulous.
It would be quick. There is no vote tonight because you're just seeing this draft of the policy protocols, policy subcommittee protocols and guidelines document, which we met and spoke about. And the subcommittee wanted to move forward to share it with you all in case you had any notes. So the next step would be for you all to take some time with us. I think you, you just got it recently, so probably we need to bring it back on another meeting to get those notes. Because I don't think we can do notes by email, correct?
Right. We, we could give notes to like Tim or JJ, but we can't give notes to each other.
So you could do that and then we could bring it back for discussion if those notes warranted a discussion or, and we could let Tim make that call. Or we can, in either case, you know, discuss it. It, it's not vital. I, we were just trying to time it out, you know, before I leave. But it's, the ball is rolling and it can be taken care of. So we're on our way with that. We don't have any actual policy for you tonight without Tim, but there are a couple of things that we're working on. You, you also see minutes that we were catching up to. So we are catching up to our own protocols. Just with our, our, just with Lisa and just all of that. So if you so choose, you can look back on those minutes that we finally got to approving. And that's it. Do you have anything else, Joe?
No.
Thanks.
Can I just ask you two quick questions? I only had a chance to quickly look at it before the meeting.
Yes.
Did you like create this on your own or was there like a template from MASSE?
I used MASSE. I created it on my own and then drew from MASSE with, for, just for some general language.
Okay. Because I noticed some like carryover in between like our school committee handbook.
Yeah, and they don't.
So we should just cross-reference the language in our, in our school committee member handbook.
What do you mean?
We have a section on policy. It's very short. But we just want to make sure, I think, that whatever we're saying.
That it agrees. Okay, yeah, sure, I can look at that.
And then you had mentioned MASSE offers the online hosting. Do you happen to know what that costs right now?
So Tim was going to look into that and I was going to look into that. And I, we haven't, our last meeting wasn't, didn't get posted, so we had to delay. So we're going to talk about that.
Okay.
We figured unless it was very reasonable, it might not be an option right now. So. But he knew, he's interested. I mean, he's, what we're looking for is just a, a system that takes away user error potentiality, right? So that, the, the maintenance of it and the tracking of it is a little more plug-in. And therefore with changeover or with, when, when we have a small board and so many people are, or whatever, that it just maintains itself a little better. In the meantime, I've sort of, what's the word? Made examples, prototyped a couple of like tracking sheets.
Okay.
That I've kind of said to Tim and Lisa, "This really needs to make sense to you guys." So those are linked in there by month and by like section. And so take a look at those and see what you guys think because, you know, you also don't want to make something like this overly complicated. But it's, you know, there's a million policies. So in lieu of having the budget for, and maybe there's like some kind of a grant that, I don't know. I honestly, it'd be, it'd be nice if districts could just have access to that policy tracking software or whatever.
Many districts do.
We will, yeah, we will come back with the amount on that.
Because we did look at it years ago when we did our audit.
Was it crazy?
It was not within our reach then. I, I don't think it's super expensive. I, I would have to look back at my notes. I think it was like five thousand to start.
Oh.
But they don't, they don't track for you. It's just instead of being on our website, it would be on their website.
It wasn't work fed.
Yeah. So you know how like right now it's on our website? It would no longer be on our website. It would be on theirs.
Yeah, they basically just hosted.
Yeah, anytime, any tiny edit or anything, you have to do all that work and then funnel it to them.
Yeah, you do all the work, they host it.
Yeah, I mean, that's how Joe and I felt when we looked at it before, unless, unless it's changed.
It's not worth it. We'll, we'll look at it then and see.
Okay.
It's not like what you're envisioning.
Which is a great idea.
Which is a very good idea. Actually, you should start it. If you can offer it for lower cost, there you go.
Database. Well, it's funny because, well, okay, I'm not going to go there. But I did see a really cool thing. It's also ten that's for the night when I stop making sense. We're done.
I was going to say, I'm going to give Kate, I'm going to give Kate's brain a tap, tap. Policy done. Okay. I, I really don't ever get to gavel, so. Okay, so.
Who are you gavelling? Which one of us?
This is the end of policy. I'm just giving ourselves a tap. All right. So we'll move on to the next item under new business. Mr. Manion's going to bring us through the vote to approve the transportation contract.
This is a, a vote to award the transportation contract. So just to recap, we're in the third and final year of the contract for regular bus transportation. That's the large yellow buses. We used an IFB process. That's an invitation for bid. We're looking for a three-year contract. The bid has closed and we received a bid from one bidder. It's Michael J. Connolly and Sons, Inc. Connolly and Sons, they're currently our vendor for transportation. So under an IFB, we award the contract to the lowest-priced responsive and responsible bidder. Responsive refers to a bidder that meets all of the requirements as set forth in the bid. And responsible means that the bidder has the experience and expertise to provide the service required. We evaluated the bid from Connolly and Sons and they are deemed both responsive and responsible. As the low bidder, we can then evaluate the prices. We can. As the low bidder, we can then evaluate the prices, we can, you know, at that point negotiate. We had budgeted twenty percent increase in the daily rate for transportation. We evaluated the bid prices and the daily rate increases by approximately twelve percent, which is considered to be favorable. Um, based on this information, we are requesting the school committee to vote to award the three-year contract to Connolly and Sons. I will say that what we're, what we, we've discussed this a little bit with budget subcommittee, so there's been a discussion and we've added two buses for next year for the middle school. I know that it's been between two and three buses has been the discussion all along. Um, we're seeing a lot of students coming into Windsor Gardens, it's, it's much more than normal. We're basically at capacity with our buses, as we've mentioned. So there is the possibility, or there may be the possibility that we need to move to three, adding three buses next year. To the extent that these daily rates in the final contract have come in more favorable than what we budgeted, we would use that amount to add a potential third bus. We won't really know until we start to do registrations, which will start on March, May first, but we should evaluate, you know, May, June, and going into the summer, if indeed it's two buses or three. So there's still the potential that it could be three, but we should be able to afford that with some of the savings on the rates.
Any questions about awarding the contract?
So Sean, we don't have the contract yet, we, we give you, we approve that you can award it and then you negotiate the contract.
I'm needed this process, this is what we did with academic discoveries. The school committee will vote to award the contract, if we vote it tonight, then Jason Adams, the town procurement officer, will send them the award letter, and then at that point in time, it starts contract negotiations, where we, then we're basically working on a contract.
Mm-hmm. So we have their bid in our packet?
Yeah.
And once we enter contract negotiations, you would bring things back to us in executive session as needed?
If we need to, yes.
Okay.
Do you guys usually vote the final contract then?
We, we do.
Okay. And oftentimes the bid has much of the language that's included in the final contract, so I, I don't see any issues with contract, contract negotiations with them.
Okay.
They're very reliable and a great vendor, and we have a great relationship with them, so I think this is a win-win situation. Ideally, we'd have a five-year contract, ideally, maybe we'd get a couple of bids, but I think this is, this is a good situation.
Okay.
Move to approve the um, contract bid? I'm not doing it, thank you. Moved by Joan, seconded by Kate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it passes five to zero. Thank you very much. All right, um, the only other thing we have is our consent agenda. We have two items under the, in the consent agenda, we have um, one, Baystate Textiles January rebate, as well as uh, the budget transfer monthly report.
Can we accept them both?
We absolutely can.
Um, move to accept, approve Baystate Textiles rebate for a grand total of?
Eight sixty-three.
It's actually a good amount.
Eight hundred sixty-three dollars and ten cents, and uh, the monthly budget transfer.
And the budget transfers, that's the monthly one.
That's just the report, doesn't actually need, it doesn't actually.
Excellent, awesome.
Second. All right, moved by David, seconded by Joan, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it passes five to zero. All right, so that brings us to that point in the night for school committee addenda. Teresa?
Yeah, um, just to echo appreciation and respect for everybody who, who came tonight and who wrote to us, um, especially the students who spoke, it's not easy to speak um, at any age, um, and I, even though the vote went the way it did, I appreciate what they said, and um, it doesn't take away the merit of the program or the caliber of the teacher or anything that we heard tonight, and the emails, the emails have been phenomenal. Um, hearing from so many uh, recent students and students who graduated and to hear, you know, the benefit of a Norwood Public Schools education. Um, I wish we heard more of that when it wasn't around reductions. Um, I would love if somehow JJ, in the curriculum, um, students wrote to us at all levels and, and told us or spoke to us or somehow communicate with us what is going really well, what do they love? I know we hear some of it through the SAC, and maybe that's the avenue that we improve upon it there, um, but I would love to hear voices more outside of making hard budget decisions. Um, Emery, I know we'll, we'll look at like long-term agenda and we can talk about agenda offline as well, but we've also fallen away from our, our trend of having our athletic director and our fine arts director here, and I know it takes up time, but um, I would love to get them back in at some point to celebrate activities.
This actually is about, sorry, this is about the time, because we usually wait until after the.
Well, we usually have them after every season, we haven't had them at all this year.
I thought we did.
I think maybe John at fall, but not Jeff, I don't think we had Jeff yet.
I think that there was a con, like, I'll look back, but I thought we, I thought we definitely did, but it's, it's actually.
Jeff was here? Okay, then I, then I apologize, okay, well, then we didn't have them, okay, so we should get them on again soon. I apologize if I'm, for some reason I thought they didn't come at all this year. Um, but I know like direction we had given to the student advisory council was not to include the athletic and fine arts updates, because we would be getting them from Jeff and John, so I just want to make sure we get it, so that we are celebrating and promoting and putting out there all the good in our schools. Um, our budget hearing is on the nineteenth, was that posted today in the newspaper for the two-week notice?
It should have been.
I hope so.
Tim and I signed off on it last week with Priscilla, so it should have been.
Okay, and then I know you said, Sean, next Friday you'll have budget information available, right?
Um, the goal's Friday, it would be Monday morning by the latest.
Yeah, okay, okay. Because we meet again as a subcommittee on the seventeenth, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and then just, I would encourage members of the community, I know it's a lot of different meetings, and I know we talk about budget in a lot of different ways here, but you know, if there's things that we said tonight that you feel like you want to advocate, definitely continue to advocate with us via email or at our budget hearing, um, but also reach out to the finance commission and the board of selectmen and the town manager if it has to do with how money is allocated, um, because we only control so much. Um, but thank you again for everybody who wrote to us and came out tonight and spoke to us.
Good, thank you. Kate?
I want to thank everyone who's here tonight and who has reached out to us about the Latin program, which is clearly um, impactful and rewarding for so many kids, and thank the dedicated educator who has given herself to that role. I will not go on too long because I am not articulate right now, but this is a microcosm of how absurd the world that we live in is in the sense that our priorities as a civil society in terms of funding education put us in this situation over and over and over, and I understand that we all have to pay our taxes, and I understand there's not an unlimited budget, but our priorities are screwed and it's a crazy world right now. Um, and I just encourage everyone to keep advocating and paying attention, and it's all connected. All we have is each other, that's all I'm going to say.
Thanks, Kate.
I don't, I'm out.
Joan?
Uh, I am going to echo my colleagues by saying I want to thank everybody who came out and sent us letters about the Latin program. Um, I consistently and for the um, six years that I've been on the committee, have tried to foster dialogue, um, and always appreciate it when we can, can sit down and talk about what our priorities are. Um, having said that, we're going to have to sit down and talk about what our priorities are. Um, a whole lot uh, in, in the upcoming years because, um, or in the upcoming year only because uh, the uncertainty around funding and the uncertainty around what that looks like is going to impact local budgets um, the most, and uh, we got to figure out what are our priorities and as a community, what is best for Norwood, um, and so I hope we continue the conversation.
Thank you, Joan. David?
Uh, yes, I want to thank those that showed up to advocate, we, we appreciate that, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, as I had said earlier, you know, we have uh, a finite amount of resources and we, we have to sort of make decisions, and then we don't take these decisions lightly. I think there was, you know, it was data-driven, and although um, you know, it, it does hurt a group of students, we try to make these decisions where we're going to have the least impact possible, and uh, most of the time that least impact means that it still is some students, and that's what um, makes it incredibly difficult. Um, I do want to pivot a little bit, I've been meaning to, to say this, but as we talk about advocacy, you know, I, I guess we talk about the devils that are in the details as we enter testing season in public schools in Massachusetts. Um, so there was a ballot question that was passed um, in November that removed MCAS as a graduation requirement. This graduation requirement has been in since two thousand and four-ish. Um, it first came into effect for the class of two thousand and six, um, and that was for both math and English. This goes back to the Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three. Um, that reform act in Massachusetts came out of a lawsuit from Brockton, um, where a Brockton family sued the state, and they compared the two towns, where Wellesley, and I actually believe it was Westwood. Um, and the funding disparities and disparities of success amongst those towns were so great, and this, the judge actually ruled in favor of this family because they did say, yes, this is an issue and we need to fix it. So since nineteen ninety-three, we've been on this quest to try to fix this problem um, with Ed Reform, and you know, um, as somebody that has been in education, um, where we've tried to dismantle it, we've villainized professionals, we have pushed out, and, and people have retired who are, who are good. You may not have always liked the decisions they make, but, but were good and, and got what we were trying to do, and we're not replacing those people, as we saw um, tonight in the legislative advocacy piece, where the state is removing a cap on people that are retired to work. The reason they're doing that is because people are now not going into this field, and this is only going to get worse, and we continue to do this. We got the ability of those on the ground to keep building safe through changes in chapter two twenty-two and my personal favorite thirty-seven H, um, and that damage is real. Um, and now, um, we've done it with MCAS, and, and while on the surface it seems like a great idea, the purpose of MCAS was the idea that whether you were in Brockton, whether you were in North Hampton, whether you were in Springfield, Worcester, Salem, that when you take a Biology nine course, that that's, there's going to be equity across that, um, and, and that's what that test did. The test from when it started in two thousand and six, kids don't have to write an essay anymore. They have gutted that test, um, they have now gutted a mechanism to be able to ensure equity in education across the state, and it's now fallen, it's, it's similar what's happening at the federal level. People are saying, well, now town to town, they can determine that. And this is no judgment against our high school administration, I think they put forward, I did vote no on it out of my principles, um, as a licensed teacher, ten-year teaching veteran, and now licensed administrator, that that's going to create more harm than good. Um, and, and they're not the only ones to do it, my, my school has done a simple thing, and, and the best thing is, as we've come out of this bubble of MCAS with, you know, there are trends in these tests. Um, we've now devalued this test, this test still is going to be used to measure districts, it's going to be used to give scholarship money to students, and we've devalued it. And, and we're in this time where we say that, yet as a school committee member, I sit here and hear people clamoring for AP tests, when APs are literally the opposite of everything we want. AP courses are teaching to the test, full stop. There is no mechanism that the board, uh, the college board has that uniformly across every institution of higher learning in the United States, that if you score a high enough grade on something, that you then get credit for it. That varies by institution, so we, you know, I guess my, my message here is, and, and it comes with me like, we continue to devalue the high school diploma and the degree. We talk about reading and writing, well, you've taken it off a test. I, I do think that when someone earns a degree from high school, you should, you should have a certain level of writing and a certain level of reading, and I say this not because I think any of us or you out there have, have done anything wrong, but I'm nervous. Um, every day that passes, I get more nervous for public education, because five years ago or six years ago, I'll use history in English as an example, where um, you may have twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five people apply for an open teaching job for that, those numbers have gone down. Like, this continues to get worse, and, and I just, I, I wish people would, you don't have to agree with everything um, that we do, but you need, you need to allow educators and those that have been trained and that are licensed to, to be a part of this conversation, because if you don't and you continue to do things like this that in theory sound good, um, you're going to continue to dismantle um, our public education system. So thank you.
Thank you, David. Um, I don't have very much tonight, I just want to echo my colleagues and, and thanking everybody for, you know, their, their um, passionate discussions this evening, or not discussions, but they're passionate, you know, please. Um, I do want to uh, put out there that if anybody has emailed me and I have not emailed them back yet, there is a good reason for that. I got a lot of emails, and so that, you know, again, goes to um, uh, goes towards the positive experiences that quite a lot of students had in, in this program, and I will not take that away from this program, and, and nothing that we voted on tonight takes away from that. Um, it does not take, it does, I said it earlier, and I will reiterate, you know, what we have decided tonight is not an indictment on the program or the educator, you know, um, there, there was a valiant effort to keep this program running for a very long time with limited resources and limited, um, varying enrollment, why would we say limited, varying. Would this, you know, do I wish that it was a more broadly accepted class in this time, in this town, in this climate? Yes, because I do, I do see the value. I'm also, if you don't know, I've also been a scientist for twenty-plus years, like I've certainly done my fair share of, of um, Latin roots. But um, I, I just want to, I just want to reiterate again that, you know, the, the, the students are evidence of the passion of the program in place, and I do really, do truly appreciate um, all of them coming out and giving us their, their opinion strongly, um, and I, and I definitely um, wish we didn't have to make those kinds of decisions, unfortunately. Um, but a lot of times I find in this role, I have to think much more with my head than my heart. Um, and, and that's a tough role to be in, but it's, it is, it is necessary. Um, and unfortunately, with the way that budgets and finances are looking in the coming years, not only federally, we talked a lot about federally, but just, just right down to our own, our own homes and our own backyards, uh, things are going to get tight and tough, and it's not going to be pretty. Um, and I'll be definitely having to think with my head way more than my heart going forward. But that is it for me. I do want to thank everybody for joining us this evening, um, we do have another meeting scheduled. Our, our next meeting is actually our budget um, hearing, um, which is going to occur in two weeks on um, March nineteenth. Um, it will be at seven PM, actually, I want to be absolutely one hundred percent correct, I think we posted it for seven fifteen, um, so the actual start of the actual hearing is at seven fifteen PM. Um, just as a reminder to the public, um, our public hearing, our, our public budget hearing is, is very much runs like our public comment, um, where those who wish to speak about the budget, anything in the budget, doesn't have to be one specific item, it can be all of the items, um, but you still get three minutes, so you know, please do, if there's something that you want to speak to us about, you feel strongly that something should or should not be in our budget, please do come out. Um, you can sign up in the exact same ways that you sign up for public comment, or you can come and sign in here, um, uh, just like you would for public comment. Um, again, it, it is a three-minute limit per person, but it is unlimited. Where in public, our public comment during our business meetings is limited to thirty minutes, our public budget hearing is specifically to hear from the public on what um, they feel strongly about in our budget. Um, so I do invite all to um, to pay, I don't want to say pay attention, that's so, that's so demeaning, to, to take a really, to take a look at our budget and, and really come and tell us what, what you think about it. Um, so that will be next, uh, in two weeks on March nineteenth, and then we do have one more meeting after that, where we will vote on the final budget on March twenty-sixth. With that, um, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Moved by David, seconded by Teresa, and I, I will um, take that as a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.